All right, so it is 2:30. Call the order, stand to the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
This is too big.
Present.
Mr. Gilley?
Yes.
Too many things.
You've been.
Mr. Huber.
Here.
Had to dig what you wanted, huh?
Mr. Lipsky.
Here.
Mrs. Ross is here, sort of. Mrs. Serbyal is here.
Yes.
And Dr. Spencer.
Here.
Okay. So, six. Do you have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, so college and career, or career and college night presentation?
We have those today. Anna Giegus-Loss, she is the career development facilitator over at the Pankow Center. And I did come up with her working with her for career night, which was just last one day. And we started talking about how both career and college night are two very big nights for our students. We thought you guys could learn a bit more about it, so can you go ahead?
So, Anna, before you begin, I just want to share with you that we are trying to run a little bit more efficiently and effectively as our meetings are. So, we are asking that the presentations stay around 10 minutes. I am gonna, we're trying this out, it's all new. So, I'm gonna go ahead and start the timer so you kind of know where you're at as far as time. And then we will, of course, want to ask you questions after, so we usually leave about five minutes for questions, too. Okay?
All right. So, yes, my name is Anna Giegus. We just, one of my major roles in the district is I'm a career facilitator. So, I conduct the educational development plan through Career Cruising with students, and students 7th through 12th grade, the addition of 7th grade this year. And so, that's working closely on their education plans, on getting them to kind of come up with a future as to where they're going, how their classes relate to their career path, and showing them the resources and all the things necessary to write that path. And one of the other hats that I wear is doing some of the career and college events. There's three major events, one being Career Night, that we started four years ago now. It was something that we had done years ago in the district on a biannual. We brought it back, and it is an information sharing evening for students of all ages, primarily A-2, 12th, but really open to anyone, to come and learn about any particular career, specific careers. And we just decided to kind of divide it up into what we call the career pathways. So, Michigan has identified six major career pathways that all careers fit into. These are broad categories. And from there, careers are broken down into clusters and then industry. But for our event, it's six broad categories, so the student can kind of direct themselves as to which area they would want to go in, or a couple of areas. And we started really by, you know, calling upon people that have done other events for us, asking teachers in the career and technical education out at Pankow Center, all their contacts, their advisory committee, to bring professionals in. And it is, I'm proud to say, it's growing little by little each year with the need for talent in Michigan and across the country. This year, we brought in the skilled trades and apprenticeship program representatives. So, I was pretty happy to do that. The six categories that it's divided up into would be, well, basically, a pathway is a broad grouping, like I explained, but the six categories would be the arts and communications, the business management, marketing tech, engineering, manufacturing, industrial technology, health sciences, the human services, and natural resources and neuroscience. So, a little bit in each category. So, we had close to 65 tables represented. And some of, like, the skilled trades were representing many careers within one area, one labor unit, or apprenticeship program. So, it was a pretty major event, and each year, it's growing a little more. And these individuals are volunteering their time, it takes all your plan. You know, if I'm out at my daughter's dance night, I'm like, hey, do you want to do Career Night? Because in fact, this is how I got some psychologist and, you know, just kind of bringing people together for the students. It's an hour and a half event. And it turned out, this year was a really, really good event. I have some pictures. I can go back to that. That's some of the skilled trades that we had. So, just in that area alone, plus there were other careers represented that fit into that category of engineering. We had the operating engineers, the Musk careers, that's construction, and that's electrical union. Chemical contractors, so they might include the plumbers and pipe, pipe careers. Trail trades, so that's like bricklaying and tile. U.S. truck driving schools, a pretty big school, iron workers, statewide carpenters. And I had the opportunity to tour these facilities last fall with the counselors. And so, it was, it was really phenomenal what I saw, and just what they're willing to offer to anybody coming in who's not on that college track. You know, just really, many of these careers are paying better than individuals who have gone off to college, and if you don't have a focus. So, it was really impressive. And then the MAT2 program, MAT Square, and HVAC, and the Foray Automation. They are a company that we toured for Manufacturing Day that offers their own apprenticeship. And they do advanced manufacturing machining. They had a couple of their young employees that went through the program, are now working, earning salary, and they're paying for their schooling. So, it was a, it was a really good, good turnout, good turnout of community. So, there's just some highlights, some pictures. Had the Border Patrol there, they have their own recruiting process, so I was excited to have them come. There's some more pictures. And that's, that was Career Night. So, our next event coming up is College Night. So, College Night is really sponsored by the MACRO Association. It's acronym for Michigan Association of Collegiate Registers and Admissions Officers. So, all of the major universities and colleges and tech centers that are members across Michigan and a little bit of Ohio are part of this association that come to large school districts and set up for recruiting. And this is open 10th through 12th graders, and community college schools. And most of our major districts will hold this, so you have Chippewa, Incafe, Macs Cruz are surrounding. They do it all over the state. So, this event happens every year in April. And so, we'll have probably 70 or so representatives. And then I'll get contacted, we'll invite the military representatives. The military, by the way, was also, a few of them were present at Career Night. The military representatives, service academies, I have here, I hand out, too, that, of the list of, it's kind of a snapshot, I have a whole program with the map, but it lists all of the organizations that are, that do attend Career Night. And I'll have some new ones each year that are, become new members of the association. So, usually around between 70 and 75 tables at Pankow Center, I promise. Plus, service academies. So, this year also, we'll have the MAT+ program. And we'll have things, a program called Youth for Understanding, and AFS Inter-Cultural is our study abroad program. And then finally, my third event of the year is Transportation Day. This has been a longstanding tradition since before me of a career day for 4th graders. So, it, it highlights human service careers, careers that use any type of vehicle on their job. So, anything from emergency response to heavy equipment, it could be promotional. And it's designed just to kind of as a fun activity for our 4th graders to start learning about careers. This is held in the back of the Pankow Center parking lot, so we bus all the students over. We usually have, pretty around six of the schools usually present each year. Sometimes there's a conflict day, it's like Field Day and stuff like that. So, but we send an invite every year to all little elementary schools and have the 4th graders come over. We're organizing groups. Our high school students at the Pankow Center guide them in the circuit around the parking lot, and they get to learn about those different types of careers. And we'll have sometimes anything from helicopter to, always the police station, always the firefighters. We'll have different ones, the Coast Guard will bring their rescue boat. We've had Boat USA, we've had all different kinds. Last couple of years, we've had the sheriff do the flight. It's got expensive, hold on. Plus, it kicks up a little dirt, so.
But it's also cool.
But, no, we've had the Coast Guard rescue copter, they're usually, you see them flying around this time of year, they're usually doing their training, so kind of become a conflict.
Yeah, good timing.
Those are the three major events that I, I kind of work to organize each year. So, they're big events, they happen all year round, and.
Perfect. Wow.
You want a pilot program, thank you.
Yay, awesome.
Good job for being first, Anna.
Oh, my goodness. You really set the bar, huh?
Yes, you did. Don't tell Andrea.
All right, board questions?
I have a question.
Sure, tell.
So, it's ironic this came up, because I see here about logging into Career Cruising and such. And I, from time to time, will gather young people around my dining room table and help them try to get into colleges if they want to, or, you know, apply for their FAFSA, or do all of that sort of thing. Well, it came up, because some of them have already graduated, that I'm hoping that they can still have access to their Career Cruising even when they've left. Is that true?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so then, so their same login should still work?
They may have to contact me.
Oh, okay.
Contact me, and I'll look it up.
Okay.
It goes kind of dormant, but it's there.
Okay, good.
And, yes.
That would be huge, because some of them really worked a lot on that, and then when there wasn't access, I thought, oh, my gosh, I, I hope it's still there, so.
Yeah, and I could set up an account for anyone. They wouldn't do an EDP, but like yourself, it would be a graduate. So, this is a program that is used on the college level. Michigan Lawrence uses it, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, McComb, Oakland University, all career centers and colleges have these assessment tools, and a lot of them do use Career Cruising.
Super, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I just want to say, when I first saw, one of the things that were listed on there, I thought it said towel, something over there, and then I saw bricklayer, and I went, oh, that's not a towel, that's a towel.
Trail trades, yes.
That's pretty impressive stuff. I know the kids really do enjoy when you do the College Night, and especially Transportation Day is always a lot of fun.
I have a few questions for you. You said that Career Night started biannually, and now you're having it annually?
Yes.
Have you seen that be a great improvement? Was it good for you to?
I, you know, I was brand new to the district back then, and I wasn't in the role, but, you know, I think it was conducted much differently. It relied heavily on advisory committee members, those are for the teachers at the Pankow Center. We've kind of, you know, evolved it into asking anyone. And what I'm finding is that each year, more and more people are happier to do it. I think the word is out about the talent shortage in Michigan, whether you're in education or not. And people want to help. And so, we've cold called, we've reached out to friends, coworkers, strangers, so, you know, it's all what our building can accommodate comfortably, too, and it's, it's done well.
You said that you had 65 tables?
Yes.
What's your max?
Um, well, I do the College Night, I can have up to 75. That, that's about max without going into the classrooms and using classrooms, which we do use. I clear out a couple of large classrooms for that. Like, Michigan State has a huge draw, so we give them space. But I'd say comfortably, that, that's, that's pretty good. And that's about, I take surveys of both events, just for my own knowledge, just to know what people are thinking, the gap, you know, the, the public. And it's an hour and a half event, both events. I kind of use the model of College Night or Career Night. That is a short enough amount of time, is long enough, you know? Anything longer, most people don't want to commit to that in the evening. It's, it's a lot for everyone. So, it's an hour and a half event, and if you start getting more tables, you may not, I, I know that I'll hear that I didn't get enough time to talk to people.
Right.
Because I already kind of do sometimes, especially for a popular college or career.
Right. Also, have you tapped into any alumni in regards to having people come back for Career Night?
Yes, actually, we had Katie Nelson.
Yeah, we had a brand new one.
We did, and one of, at the very last minute, a student who was a construction student, and his name is Justin, Justin. And he's like a poster child of, of construction. He went through Ferris State, he graduated with his four-year, now he's working in the industry for a construction company, and he came and had a table at the last minute. I mean, I would love to have more alumni. I mean, for our students, they, it's nice to see somebody that they can relate to. My niece was one this year, she's an occupational therapist, assistant, and her fiance is an occupational therapist. They, she was a graduate of the district, and she was in the Health Activities, and so there's, there's been some.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much, thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, next topic.
We are awesome, look at this. And we're gonna get Andrea.
Change my glasses a lot.
So, mirror, we're trying to roll with the timer, we're gonna see. So far, the one time we used it, it worked. So, we're gonna see.
Works 100% of the time so far.
Right, right.
Where'd you find that? I think you ordered it.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
So, thank you for coming in and presenting to us. We're kind of trying something new. So, we, we're gonna start a timer for 10 minutes, to have the presentation be 10 minutes long. And then we're gonna save five minutes for questions from the board. Okay, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, so whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hi, I'm Andrea, and I think most of you know me, I'm a principal at Middle School Central. And looking around, I think most of, a lot of you have had students in my building, so this is like a parent meeting.
Kids are grown, yeah.
So, anyway, I brought, and I'll just pass them around, you guys have seen that, this is, what a fabulous idea this was, and it was nice to make a front cover for our building. But anyway, I can pass the copy around, and here's some of the McComb Daily article that we had, as, as well as the journal, thank you. All right. So, middle school robotics. So, we have a high school team at Pankow, which I'm sure you're aware of. And since my fabulous parents approached me, and they said, we want to do this at the middle level. And I thought, well, how wonderful, because it's bringing real-world applications, you know, from the classroom into real-world applications, kids are learning how to do things, they're learning how to code, and if you've, you know, if you're out and watching the job market, coding jobs are pretty high-paying, pretty good future careers to have. So, long story short, as a principal, it just seemed like a no-brainer to support an academic fun program for kids. So, we went forward, and I didn't quite realize at first how much work. And how much money you have to raise, and what you have to do. But the learning for kids was phenomenal, it's a great program. So, we work with an organization called FIRST. And it stands for, here, Inspiration Recognition of Science and Technology. And basically, it's a great organization with some very strict rules. But we did learn a lot this year, and we were one of the best rookie teams in the state. Only two rookie teams made it to the state finals, and we were one. So, I think we were organized and together, and we're still learning things, but it was a pretty neat experience. So, here's their mission, vision. And basically, it's to inspire young people in science and technology. And it's great to see that there's just as many girls as boys, and it's just a great STEM activity. And there's lots of people in the community that you don't normally meet or have access to that come to these meetings that know how to code, that are engineers. It's fascinating who you meet through this process.
Thank you.
So, we are in the FIRST Tech Challenge, grade 7 through 12. So, and a lot of mentoring happened as well for some of the high school kids. So, that was great, to see them come over and work with our kids. So, the FIRST Tech Challenge, here are what some of the robots look like. So, we buy a kit, and then they construct them. And there's always a crisis the night before, Mrs. Fun, the arm doesn't work, doesn't work. I was up till 2:00 in the morning. So, yeah. So, anyway, it's, it was a lot of fun, and a lot of hours spent on robotics. But again, all very critical skills for life, I think, if you want to go into engineering and the tech field. This is what the playing field looks like for the robots. So, it's, it's a lot of fun. There's always a red and a blue team, and it goes by points, and how well you can maneuver, and basically, who survives at the end without being destroyed. So, there's very strict rules, and, and becoming a driver of the robot is also something you have to try out for, and something you have to practice, because it's not so easy. So, here are some of the data that FIRST sends out, which I got was pretty impressive, so I added it to the slide. You know, 98% improved in problem-solving skills. I can feel my MSEP score is rising, PSAT score is going up, you know, the more kids get involved. This year, I think we had like 17 students, and next year, I think we'll probably field two teams. I think we'll have enough to do that, we have enough interest. So, yeah. But anyway, lots of really good stats here on, on the robotics program. So, also, it's been very heavily, I'm sure you're aware, supported by the state of Michigan. So, there are $80 million in scholarships. At least last year there were, and I'll anticipate there's probably the same or more this year for students that have a background in robotics. We now, thanks to the school board, have a credit as well at high school for robotics. So, that's a nice addition to, for those kids. I believe it's an electro credit, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so that is my quick presentation.
Fabulous.
All right, any questions from the board?
What's your spread? How, where do the kids, how do they spread out, grade-wise, different math class, or different science classes? What's the spread of the team, the 17 kids, yeah?
This year, it was heavy in the 6th grade, because there were a lot of 6th grade parents. But we did, we did have, I want to say, maybe three or four 8th graders and a few 7th graders, but it was pretty heavy 6th grade.
How, how does it translate to their classwork?
You know, I haven't done deep research, but most of the students on the team, it's kind of like the band, they're already the, kind of the higher-end student. But I could do that, I haven't done that, Mrs. Hilton, that's a good.
Just to kind of see, does it correlate with what they're doing in class, or is it something they can present to their class, and, because sometimes student-led stuff, I don't know.
Yeah, they like it better when it comes from other kids, yeah, a lot of times.
I think the best part about this whole robotics thing is that they're having so much fun while they're doing it from the very beginning, from the build to like cracking the package open, to the timing, and all the very, very, very pointed rules. They have so much fun that they don't even realize how much they're learning along the way. Many, many different parts of their life, that's cool.
That's a good point. As a teacher, I always wanted to try to do activities that let them to learn, but were fun, so they didn't really know they were learning.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's where I think, in our first presentation on college and career, I mean, it, they definitely tie together, the exposure to that and the opportunities. So, you know, coding's one of those things that, again, is tremendous opportunity. But awareness, we were just, they were talking about, our counselors even have had access to some of the job fields to see, how can you counsel somebody if you haven't had exposure? But now, these children have had some exposure, so that's the best type of counseling you can do.
And I think the high school team's excited, because they're gonna get some people that have had a little bit of training.
Oh, gosh, I guess, yeah.
Which means there, you know, ability to do it well, you know, as we move forward, so. And we're the only middle school at this point, but the hope is to spread to others as well, so.
How is your staff involved? How is the staff in regards to participation and being integrated into the program?
You know, it's, it's pretty parent-driven, Mr. Gilletti's involved, our tech teacher, but he's not, you know, he's not a main coach or anything like that, so.
Who wrote the curriculum, then, for the credit?
That is the high school, I don't know, Mrs. Hilton, but.
Wait, we're giving out a credit, we don't have a curriculum?
No, we're not giving out a credit.
No, that was.
This is an elective credit.
We had a, we had a discussion about this not too long ago.
Wait, didn't you just say they're giving elective credit?
I thought, I thought that's what I was, made aware of.
There was a conversation with the curriculum department, with Dr. Dixon and a parent about this issue, and they chose to put out a press release about this issue.
Oh, that's.
Right, that did not come from the curriculum department. So, there was an exploration, not a decision.
I apologize.
Undergoing, yeah, right on.
No, you actually brought, yeah, good opportunity to.
We probably need to be honest with, or, or open, at the very least, with parents that this is not a credit, because.
It's definitely legally permissible, however, however, it has not gone through the board, and we're not done looking at how that would exactly work. We're trying to look at other districts. I know Greg was looking at other districts and how it worked. It was, it was a meeting that went well, but it was not, like, conclusive. It was, obviously, they, that was a request.
Yeah.
I can understand that, but it was not totally decided yet. So, I know, Andrea, you're not really in the middle of this, Andrea. Sorry, yeah, no, it's nothing to do with Andrea, there's no problem there, but it's just, sorry.
Yeah, because this didn't start as a board-driven thing, so in terms of like honesty, it's there, but, yeah. There was some.
Well, I think there's, it sounds like there's mixed messages.
Right.
There was.
Oh, good. As you were, Greg.
Oh, hi.
We were just talking about you.
32.
Actually, 42. It's the secret to life.
Greg, I was just speaking about the slight, well, there's some, a little bit of a mixed message between the instructor, one of the instructors of the robotics team declaring to students that there is definite high school credit involved with robotics versus our exploratory, you know, we agreed to explore and look into the possibility of that, and not just, we haven't made the statement or gone through the board about declaring that everyone receives credit for robotics the senior year, so I just.
It's possible.
That, that's right.
Through independent study.
Right, right, but we haven't, we hadn't vetted that all out yet, right.
But it's not a guaranteed.
Right, right.
Participate as well.
So, there's a little, there's, there's, and, please don't feel awkward about this, Andrea, but.
Yeah.
I know you probably do, but I'm sorry.
We're overreacting now, yeah.
Aren't you glad I got here in time?
No, that was probably, that, that's probably something that had to come out of the table, because I, there's been more than one board member that asked me, because there was a little bit of a splashy press release on this, and it was not a, it looked like it had come from us, and it did not, so.
So, actually, I have friends that have kids in this, and they rave about how much fun their kids have. I hate to say it, I'm, like, when it's extracurriculars, my thought process doesn't go to, okay, engagement and class, and that's, I mean, it's kind of what we do here, but as a parent, I'm like, is your kid having fun? Because like, let him do fun stuff that involves him in the school.
Yeah, right.
And they are having fun.
And, and learning, it's perfect, you know what I mean, right?
They don't know it, though.
Exactly. I was gonna say, you know, I had a, a good perception of the robotics teams. I used to oversee those for Oakland County, and one of the great things was I was able to go and actually be with the teams on the Saturdays when they were, and to stand there and watch the kids analyze how their robot did, come back, and then make a modification, and then. and then figure out, and then problem-solve, and cooperate with each other, and it was unbelievable, because for me, the big thing that's missing in education is a lot of relevancy and being able to apply what you're learning. And this is a natural. But there are so many other benefits in terms of working together, capitalizing on the strengths of every, every individual member on the team, and on and on. I just, I, I couldn't support, this is one of the programs that I really highly support. And in terms of applying what you're learning, if there's anything that would warrant credit, it would be something in this regard. So I'm glad to hear that you are exploring that area.
Sharon, you have your last question?
I just wanted to say, if you remember to do that, sort of like throw us a little note and let us know when their competitions are. When my son was in it in the high school, we went to Alhman, I'll tell you what, you'll find parents who like normally aren't competitive, who they get competitive. But it's a whole lot of fun, and, and I would love to be able to come watch some of their stuff, and we, you know, kind of. Yeah, thank you, just throw some notes, thank you. Appreciate the.
Thank you. Good to see you, as always.
You know, I really think that you should follow that up with an air horn. Well, this is at the quietest setting.
And in the big room, it won't be as bad, I don't think, you know? We'll get used to it.
Let's have some fun.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, very much.
Wells is coming, right? Is that Tanya?
So the next presentation is on the wellness committee, which we, and Sharon, our board representatives, and I just, Tanya, now.
Hello.
Food Service. And we think Tanya will get through this like in five minutes.
Perfect.
She's fast.
I got, I got you, we have this fun little Jew daddy.
No. Oh, where's my booker?
You can either.
Okay.
No booker.
Okay. Hi, everyone, I'm Tanya, Food Service Supervisor, so I'm here to talk about the wellness committee, my passion. It's a pain in the butt sometimes, because we have to reconvene every three months, or four times a year. So anyways, we designated, and this is by the USDA, it's a standard federal mandated thing that we have a wellness committee, and so the purpose is to establish goals to oversee the health and nutrition program. We will meet four times a year, like I said, we kind of had to squeeze it in, because time gets away from us. So we have those meetings set in place. And also, we want the people on the committee to be not just administrators, we want parents, students, we want the whole aspect of the input from other people, just not administrators of the district. Do I hit this one? So this is our members right now. Well, that's who I invited, so I can invite whoever. You don't always have to show up, at least I show that I invited everyone, but.
There you go.
These are the members of our committee right now, so, like I said, if they can't make it, we understand, but like, we want to get a physical ed teacher, we want to get a student, we want to get a parent, we want to get the school nurse, we want to get curriculum, we want to just get all aspects, so it's not just honed in on one certain, like, department. So that's that. And we will conduct an assessment of the committee every three years, so that's what's mandated by the law. So we try to do an assessment, you know, every three years, just to see where it's going, how we meet the goals of the committee. We can go into that, but there's a lot of information to tell you, so if you want to just join the committee, let me know. I'll be more than happy to help you. So we retain records, compliance to the wellness policy. A copy of the address and the wellness policy will go out to the public, and you, we always send, like, school messenger, we send memos, I give it all to the parents on how we're doing the wellness policy, so that parents know what we're doing is like nutritionally-based, public and the federal government. And the wellness policy can be found on our website, and it's really just a small blurb what it consists of. And Sharon, you know, like, we worked on this a long time, so it's just like a short thing. And administrative guidelines, of course. We follow the HSAT, which is more like curriculum-based, where we have goals and guidelines that we are supposed to meet as far as the wellness policy. So, you know, HSAT might be foreign to you, but if you go on our website, we have that link that tells you exactly about the HSAT, HSAT, and everyone who's on the committee will be familiar with that. So, like I said, if you want to join, come to one of our meetings. And we will inform the public, like I said, we just want to progress towards the goals that we meet as the district and the community. We will provide information on how anyone can participate, like I said, in our public base. We want everyone to participate, because, you know, a lot of parents are like, okay, what are you doing as far as nutrition and the menus? Well, come join the committee, because this is what we're doing, also mandated by the government, so. And that's it. I know, I talked in like two minutes.
No, it's good.
Sorry, did you guys understand?
You'll find out.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I gave them more time for questions, sorry.
No, that's fine.
My blood sugar's low, though. I'm kidding, I'm.
No questions from the board?
I know, if I start guessing, I'll think.
Do, do what you do directly relate to what the children are fed in our school cafeterias?
Yeah, yes, yes. So it's a little bit different, and if you're not sure, I'm sorry, you are.
Adam.
Okay.
This is Adam Liskin.
Okay, well, I didn't know.
Yeah, so sorry, Tanya.
So I'm Tanya. So it's a little bit different in our department, where I'm the Food Service Supervisor, and then we have a management company. So they deal more with the food, but I oversee, like, the food and, you know, the allergies, because it's different, yeah.
Gotcha.
So just to let you know that.
Thank you.
And I'm a nutritionist dietitian, so it's my passion.
She's kind of a rock star.
I'm not, no, I just.
Very passionate, huh? Very passionate.
I'm very passionate about my job.
And she gets to go to DC to engage them.
I was legislative chair, yeah, I was a lobbyist for school nutrition, so I know all about the legislative.
Understanding, what is it, the, I mean, the overall goal of the wellness committee is what?
The wellness committee is kind of mandated by the government, so we just want, yeah.
I understand the mandated, but what's the overall goal? Like, what do you do for the kids?
The overall goal, oh, we just want to make sure there's nutrition education, and, and we're giving the kids, like, a sound body and nutrition, you know, like.
So you want nutrition education for the kids? Is that?
We, it's like, it's different, it's nutrition promotion, nutrition education, and, and encourage them to eat, like, healthier, you know what I mean?
So you go school to school and encourage them to eat healthier?
Pretty much, yeah.
So you have programs set up that you go school to school?
Yeah, like with myself and the management company, yeah, we do, like, a lot of student choice, like, we encourage them to do the sound back.
You mean chart wells?
Yes.
Okay.
And that works well with them, I mean, we have like a good relationship, so.
So.
We do, like, student choice, like, you know, educational pieces.
How are you doing the education? How's that happening? Are we doing insert? Are we doing?
I'm sorry.
Are we meeting with them at lunches? Tell me how this is working.
Yeah, we do student council meetings, and we get, like, their buy-in, and then we promote and do student choice, you know, that way.
For like the apple-eating day?
Yeah, we do, like, education, yeah, we just, we do student choice, which is really big in high school and secondary, where we're like, okay, this is what it is, you know, here's your choice, what would you like to, you know, pick? A lot of them pick, like, the, you know, the unhealthier items, a lot of them pick healthy items, and they want to know more about nutrition. So then we sit down and talk to the student council more, and then the student council can talk to the kids.
Tell me how you think, how, how do you know if you're effective?
I think participation goes up.
With what?
With the student, with the participation, when the kids are buying more lunches.
Participation of what?
Yeah.
So when, when parents are buying more lunches, that means that your nutrition education is effective?
I think so, because they're choosing healthier items. When a kid brings in a lunch, they're not choosing healthier items, because when I look in their lunch, they're bringing really unhealthy items. When we get buy-ins to the kids, and the healthy, we're, we're choosing healthy, we're giving them healthy options, I think that's a very good thing.
How are you measuring it?
By student participation. We go month to month and look at participation, look at the sales, look at the revenue.
So what are the, what are the, which, where, do you have numbers?
I don't have them in front of me, I didn't know I needed to have them right now.
No, that's okay. Can you send them to us?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Sharon?
What was the, I just read about this, but I knew about it before, too. What was the thing that, that you have recently done with the students? And in my mind, I am remembering something with this, like a big, like a salad bar, but it wasn't just salads, it was different.
It was the A to Z when I did years ago.
Yeah, that, that, that actually does a lot of.
I got a little cheerleading outfit, yeah.
And that does a lot of dissemination of information, and what I've seen from some of the stuff that we've, we've had presented and stuff, the kids are very much into learning about better choices, and so.
And, you know, a lot of it is parent education, because if the kids are not eating it at home, the kids will get in the salad bar, and they're like, I'm not going to eat this, because my parents aren't eating it. So when I did the A to Z salad bar years ago, I said, okay, let's impact the third graders, because they're the ones that are more vulnerable. Kindergarten, first, second have no idea. The older ones are off, you know, setting their ways. When I did that, a lot of the kids had no idea what a green pepper was, and that broke my heart. So talking about education, that's where we need to educate the kids, but we also need to educate the parents. And that's where it comes of the promotion and the nutrition promotion. It's hard to, it's hard to talk to a seventh- to eighth grader, I have three kids, you know? I understand, but if they're not exposed to it at home, what, what am I going to do? Like, how am I going to eat, have them eat a salad bar? They have no idea.
In fact, there was a billboard that I think the state put out to say something like, you know, parents, your kids watch what you eat. So if, so the whole message behind the board was.
Absolutely.
Eat better, and your kids are watching.
Yeah. And Laura, I heard you, and no, they can't watch you. I'm just kidding. They can't do. She's like, carbs, 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 but totally, that is a true message, because I'm a vegetarian, I've been a vegetarian since I became a dietitian, went to Michigan State, not just because of the nutritional, just because I, I choose to do that, but I put a lot of fruits and vegetables in front of my kids. So my kid's favorite snack is like a salad, where some of the kids have never been exposed to homemade lettuce or anything like that. So I think it's just putting it in front, and every time I can get them to go to the salad bar, just like an example, I always tell a little elementary kid, and I said, "You have to take a fruit or vegetable, I'm sorry, but it's the law." So he gets like a little tiny little piece of leaf lettuce, like tiny. He goes, "Here's my vegetable." I'm like, "Oh, okay, just go."
You're pushing.
You know what I mean? They're not exposed to it at home, so I think it's like a big educational piece all around. So, that's it. My passion. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the day. Don't talk too fast.
No. How'd we do?
We did awesome.
Yay.
All right, so do we want to take a small break, or do we want to keep moving along?
Good.
All right, let's keep moving then. Mr. Superintendent?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Okay, I have a topic that is simple and complex at the same time, so I just want to talk through this, and this is an option for the Board of Education to make a decision about this. This is not required that we move forward, although it was recommended that we do, and the math makes sense to me. However, I will leave it to you to, I'm anticipating you'll have questions about this, and how we move forward, if we do move forward. So I'll be referencing a sheet that's attached to the agenda under Superintendent Bond Refinancing. That link should take you to a page that starts off with the heading of JP Morgan and Bank of America. We, I will, I'm fairly well-versed on this. Rochelle and I have worked on this a fair amount. I have asked our many questions about this, so I am, like I said, fairly familiar. There may be some things I don't know, I will take down those questions, and some may be known answers, and some maybe not. But however, here's the situation. As you know, we have outstanding bonds in repayment mode. One of our bonds, the 2008 bond, which is referenced in the first box there, originally came on, on a point-three-two fee. So there's a fee of that bond for managing the bond. One is that there's a point-two-four letter of credit, which is a protection mechanism if the, there would be a total collapse and no one was buying our bonds on the market. And then point-oh-eight is what JP Morgan charged to basically sell our bonds. So originally in 2008, the fee was point-three-two. That's just the way it was. In 2015, before I was involved, this is a variable-rate bond that is protected by the swap. If you remember, as a board, many of you were on this board and have voted in the past to continue the swap. A swap is a financial derivative that protects our variable-rate bond, so we are not stuck with a variable rate that goes too high, and as a municipality or a school district, you can enter into a swap agreement, and we did, so they protect it. Well, they decided that that was going to cost us more money to do so. In 2015, our fee was point-seven-four. Recently, with the tax changes that are now basically fully implemented from last January, there is a mechanism by which banks can charge more money to municipalities and school districts in order to protect or protect these swaps, in order to engage in swaps, in order to protect themselves, I guess. So they are charging a higher rate in order to protect themselves from something happening in the market, and them being on the hook for, for example, a rate that would go very high. That turned our rate into one-point-two-three percent. You can see, only going in the wrong direction here. So we, our financial advisor has come to us, and he is the one that was the person that dealt with these bonds to begin with, and we asked him to look into this, because he said he is, you know, he's called his clients and asked him to look into this. That has made our increased cost to $283,500 per year under the current agreement. We don't have to do anything that is real right now. There was, he, there was proposals garnered for, if this could be improved, if something could be done about this. Three banks came forward, Bank of America, we're in the middle box, JP Morgan Chase and TD Bank. TD, Bank of America and JP Morgan Chase have done a lot of business with districts and municipalities. TD Bank is a relatively new player, it is a bank based in Boston, and they have, you know, full trading rights and, you know, on par with these other banks. What you see here is the offers that they've given us for mitigating this issue for a period of time. And for Bank of America, they will sign a deal that for two years, they will protect these fees at point-six-four percent basis points to increase us to one-fourteen, two-hundred-thousand. That is less of an increase than we're currently under. Three-year, if you want three years of protection for this, they want to charge point-seven-four, you can see what that fee is. JP Morgan Chase went ahead and said, okay, we will offer you lengthier options to keep this agreement going, to basically protect the bond, and we will protect the bond from catastrophe or, or whatever else could happen. You can see, they, they gave a three-year, five-year, seven-year, ten-year, and seventeen-year offer, seventeen-year being basically the very end. TD Bank came forward with a five-year offer of point-two-nine, that's better than we originally had in 2008. That would result in a net savings yearly of $258,300. That is comprised of a letter of credit of a fee of point-two-two, that is the protection letter of credit, should these fail on the market or there be a total collapse, and or there be a total collapse, and a remarketing fee of seven basis points. So the bond in 2008 is, was valued at 55,250,000. This is, of course, a portion of all of the other bonds. The maturity does not extend by doing this. However, the savings to taxpayers, and this is taxpayer, this ties into Mary, a question you asked about, you know, a potential nervousness of ballooning costs through next year and the year after that.
Currently, our,
Right.
Our fee, our repayment for next year is 40 million dollars.
Correct.
And we paid 12 million last year.
That's correct. And the way that that's, that was beyond, my understanding is that's beyond our control and was structured in the amortization table in 2008 when this was issued. That's accomplished by holding seven mills to the taxpayers and going into the school bond loan fund to a varying degree each year, next year being more. So throughout all of this, it's clear that it's, I want everyone to understand, it is seven mills of repayment that the taxpayers make on these bonds, no matter what happens. It is, in some years, going into the school bond loan fund to make larger payments. What this will do, in essence, is not immediately change tax, your tax payments. It does not immediately change them. What happens is, at the end of the repayment, they get smaller faster. So once we've achieved seven mills out to the length of this, you can see at the very bottom here, the millage would remain at seven mills until 2037, when it would be reduced to 3.3 for the remaining three payments, or three years of payments. So the tax bill, assuming the district didn't incur additional debt, did not go out for other bonding, we would realize, you would realize a tax savings off of seven mills and you would drop to 3.3. And then in 2040, it would drop to zero. So that's, basically, it's dropping sooner. So that, again, seven mills would remain consistent for all taxpayers up through 2035, with action on this or without action on this. Basically, basically, without action, the seven mills remains until 2040 or soon, very close to 2040. With this action, it falls off to a much lower rate about three years earlier, about. So it is a net savings of 3,624,780 if market conditions remain the same. There is a cost to do this, like all things. You can see that at 276,000. I have that broken down on a sheet. If anyone would like to see that, I will pass that out. You can take it with you to show all the fees associated with this. It is an all-in, one-time cost to do this. It even added, it's not ongoing, it's not, it's not, wouldn't happen again. In all of these situations, though, whenever, I just want to be clear because the board voted to continue the swap a few years ago. When the years are up on this, whatever it is, if we went with a Bank of America two-year plan for an annual cost increase of 114,000 or the three-year plan, there does need to be action at that point in order to re-engage with this bond. So this is not, to be clear, this is not a proposal to protect this bond till maturity. It is a proposal to protect this bond for five years beyond the date in which it's approved. At that point, what we need, what we do and we look at all the time, Rochelle and I have talked about this several times, is we look at what our, there's a fee to get out of the swap and turn it into a fixed rate. Right? That's been unfavorable every time we look at it. But we would keep looking at it each quarter, or I don't know, at least once a year. And then if that payment becomes very small, I would come back to the board and say, "Hey, it's only gonna cost this much to get out of the swap and we're permanently at a fixed rate for the rest of the repayment." That would be another option if that fee became small. But it's very large right now still. And that's all market-driven. If bonds start performing better than stocks, then potentially that fee gets better. So right now, this is what I bring forward in that what it would do is, is lower the cost, the net cost of, to, beyond, below 258, 300,000 a year. And if that were to mature, materialize for their whole bond, we would save 3,624,780. But we would, in a guaranteed fashion, save 258,300 times five. Okay? Because it is protected for five years. So that's that. Um, please.
Can I address Rochelle?
Please.
Um, I hope, how many times have we redone this 2008 bond, roughly? I know we've done it a few times.
Well, before me, I'm not 100% sure.
Right.
The original bonds, based on what we had, they were issued and it was a $70 million issue. Um, and I know we did it in 2015. That's what changed it to the credit spread. Because at that time, JP Morgan Chase, that was expiring. It was better at that time to go to the credit spread. So I would say that we've done it, I know at least once prior to 2008.
We're sure on 2015.
Just got here in 2006.
I remember that, the particular one, but I wasn't sure how far back. And then what would be considered with the length of the loan left, the amount of the loan left, what would be considered a very acceptable fixed rate? And I know I'm asking a pretty big question, but.
What was the swap payoff last time we looked, Rochelle?
The swap itself was in a negative position, like 7 million.
Right.
Um, I believe that our, um, fixed rate can go anywhere up to 4, 4.25.
So like with your mortgage, would you consider that at this point, right now, allowing for all the variables in the economy that could affect us, would you consider that a reasonable fixed rate at this point? Or would you say that's a little bit high right now?
Well, I would say they're high, but.
Well, that's a given, but.
Because right now, right, if you look at our, in our financial notes, most of our variable rates, they can go anywhere from 4 to 5 percent.
Right.
Um, so I think it's a little high on the high side, based on the history that we've had. I mean, we've enjoyed low rates for a long time.
We have, right. So I'm just kinda like, if we saw something at 2.5 fixed, would we say this is something we should jump on?
Yes, I think we would.
With the understanding that you have to pay the $7 million fee, which exists right now.
Right. That's always gotta be affected into it.
That fluctuates based on market, based on what the company is saying, "Okay, pay me this money and I'll let you out of the swap." Because this is, you know, it's basically a fee to pay. There is, we do understand there is, there is market condition that could turn that almost to zero. And if that happens, it's possible, then we would definitely want to do that, even if it meant, it's all what if. But even if it meant that the fixed rate for the remainder of the bond was slightly higher, at least it would avoid any variability going forward with the bond. I mean, that would be something I'd bring back and we'd have another discussion of.
Okay, last question for me then is, does TD Bank, obviously you said it's, it has the legal authority to be doing this kind of thing. Have they been around for a long time? And now for, I mean, it's looking like they're trying to get in and start getting somebody's, somebody's, um, business, which is smart to do. But have they been in the industry long enough that we would consider them a viable partner?
Yes. There has been, they are a relative new player in Michigan, but have been a municipal and bond and school bond player in many other states for a long period of time.
For a while, okay.
So this, and this has also been reviewed by, Trune finds it acceptable as well, their bond attorney, who we work with, that Trune finds this acceptable as well, after they came over.
That's good to know. Okay, good, thanks.
Besides this bond, how many more bonds do we have out there and that are not completely done?
Well, we have, and again, looking at the financial statement notes, um, we have four other bonds out there.
Are they fixed?
I don't have the issue dates. They'll like give me the.
Those are fixed rate, though, Rochelle.
Fixed rates?
No, most of them are actually.
They're not swapped, though, correct?
They're not swapped, no. Um, but they're variable rates, but they're not swapped.
And are they higher than the?
You mean as far as the principal balance?
Yeah, the, no, the interest rate we're paying on them.
Well, the interest rate on them, it can be, for example, we have one that was, we've got a $4 million balance and the interest rate is anywhere from 3 to 4 percent. Then we have another one, it's anywhere from 3.75 to 5. So it really depends on where we issued them and the effective rate.
Are any of them gonna be paid off soon? Like within the next five years?
Um, we have, the 4 million is due on May 21st, I'm sorry, May 1st of 2022. That is the earliest one that we would have.
Uh huh.
Um, and the rest of them go, it looks like 2023. And then the other one is, I think, until maturity of 2040, if I'm not mistaken.
This is the last one. This is the end date for, this is the max date.
For most of them, right.
This is the last, of all the two tureties, this is the last one.
Who's watching these all the time? Who's looking at interest rates every month? Who's looking at these all the time? Whose job is it to know what's happening with every one of these bonds any day?
Well, I think it's a combination of us and our financial advisor. He's the one that curious us in on the market.
I'm sorry, financial advisor?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, what?
PFM's the financial advisor that was on these bonds. And he contacted us back to alert us of the situation that was occurring.
So we have somebody that, where's he from?
PFM Financial.
We have somebody hired from a financial company to watch our bonds? And we just wait for them to call?
Well, I don't think we wait for them to call. Keep in mind, we only pay interest once a year on these bonds and it's in May. And then we know the rates then, depending on what the average rate is throughout the year.
Isn't it part of their service when you contract?
Wait, 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 hold on. We have an entire finance department. Eric, and we're not watching these?
I don't think that's what was said.
We owe 200 and, what's the number? 272,620,000 of taxpayer money. We ask taxpayers for it. This does extend the life of the bond by eight years, correct? Because it was supposed to be a 30-year bond.
So.
So this does extend it by eight years, correct?
This does not extend it. It was extended and I can explain how that occurred in a second, but go ahead.
So right now, we've already extended it. Our community doesn't know about it. We owe 272 million dollars, almost 273 million dollars on a 205 million dollar bond. And we are not even doing the due diligence of somebody in this building, building knowing what's happening with these bonds every single month? Really?
I don't think that's what was said at all. No.
No, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I don't think, well, I don't know. I don't want to speak to the period of time. They are reviewed, but this was an unknown, this was a fallout from the tax, national tax changes that occurred that no one saw coming. I just want to, I just, that, I think your question is a maintenance question that is a little bit different than this specific issue.
So somebody doesn't come to you every month as part of their workload and say, "This is where our bonds are."
Well, not every month, no, because the adjustment period is much more broad on these. They don't adjust only once per year. There's no adjustment throughout the year.
No matter what? They don't come to you and say, "This is where we are." They don't make the phone call to their financial advisor, somebody that now we're paying to do this.
His fee is included in this and I can show that you're correct. And he only, it's a transaction-based fee, Mary. It's not, it's not on the work done. It's based on if the transaction goes through or not.
So if somebody came to you every month and said, "This is where our bonds are at," pretty much it would be the same report every month?
Could be very similar, yes.
I don't care if it would be the same report every month. It is important for all of us to know exactly what the hell is happening. 272 million dollars on a 205 million dollar bond that we've now extended an extra eight years. Our community doesn't have a clue what's going on and we're like.
I explored that issue as well.
Holy cow, can you imagine if they know about this?
I explored it.
Can you speak to the eight years and how we went out on this?
Yeah. Uh, what happened with that and, and.
Wait till they find out.
Well.
It's not like we're hiding something here, Mary. Let's be real. Remember the last time?
We're not disclosing it.
Remember the last time that we had a bond guy in the boardroom, stand and explain everything to us because that's what they do. They're that specialized. And while we've got a great finance department, bond stuff is not their forte, right? That's why we hire the experts to do that.
You are 100% responsible as an elected official for the finances in this district.
Did I say I was not?
Personally.
Did I say I was not?
So you don't want to know that it's gonna be your issue.
Answer my question, Mary. Answer my question. So let's get back to having Eric explain that, how we extended the eight years.
This doesn't have, this doesn't have to be, I mean, this is not an attempt to be rosy, but my understanding, and this is correct, is that the maturity date of 30 years is correct originally when passed in 2008. Because the taxpayer can only pay seven mills, because that's all that was approved, is to pay seven mills. Unfortunately, the repayment schedule was set based on, you have to set it based on what you expect property tax growth to be, whether, you know, whatever the picture is in 2008, that rate was set. That rate did not come true in 2009, 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011, when the economy was very poor and the tax, uh, everyone's tax bill was depressed. So it didn't come true. So what happened was, and this is how the school bond loan fund becomes, is statutorily required in the state of Michigan in order to protect the seven mill payments of the taxpayer, so they can't be, go up. So what that did was that extended the life of the bond because the taxpayer was not contributing the seven mills by the value of their property during that period of time. But, you know, there is, there is, um, this specifically, and I know this, we're talking about a broader issue now, but more narrowly, this does, um, address something in a favorable condition, although it was very unfavorable for a long period of time.
So there was never a vote brought before the board to extend it out for eight years? It was nothing that the board?
It was part of the original agreement.
Right.
When we went out for the bond, that is required and communicated in public.
Does anyone else have, anyone else have questions in regards to what Eric's presenting here?
Okay, my last question here. So we, let me just clarify. So we pay somebody to let us know whenever he needs to be paid to give us more information about our bond. And we don't worry about it beyond that. We don't give a crap what's going on with our bond.
Can you speak to our relationship with PFM?
Yeah, we, we.
How does that work?
We have, um, quarterly, uh, virtual, you know, phone call meetings with him.
Does he get paid every time that happens?
No.
No, he does not. No, he does not.
He just gets paid to do it quarterly?
They only get paid on transactions, when transactions.
That's a transaction-based fee. He was paid on the original.
He's recommending a transaction.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Right, and I can show you the breakdown. I'd be happy to show you the breakdown of fees baked into that 276.
But he doesn't get paid unless there's a transaction.
That is correct.
And in how many years have we had him, have we done transactions?
I think 2015 was the last time we did a transaction.
He's Jackie.
So if we were to stay on this for five years, we wouldn't have a transaction.
A particular debt.
Right. Unless, for example, something were to occur and the payoff of the swap would go down to zero and we would want to move into a fixed rate, then we could do that.
How would we know? And we're not paying attention. We're just waiting for him to call.
We pay, um, in November 1st, we have two payments each year. November 1st, we pay interest and then in May, we pay principal and interest.
So in November, you take a look at it?
No.
No. When do we look at it? When do we care enough to look at our own finances?
We care enough that we look at them on a regular basis, but nothing changes between those periods.
So we enter into an agreement and if optimal and we can save money, we'll review that as a board. We decide to make that recommendation or not. And, and each time that we've made those transition, uh, I understand we have saved significant money for, and perhaps you'd want to, you know, put together a sheet of the amount of money that we've saved by doing these, uh, transfers. Uh, I think it's important to know that, so that our community knows that we have saved significant money on these, from the original agreement. And the fact that.
Donna, we owe 272 million dollars on a 205 million dollar bond.
I would appreciate if I could finish my talk.
How much have we saved?
I would appreciate. Lance Cruz is not unique in the fact that their bonds have been extended. Across Michigan, when the property values dropped, every bond, uh, which is based on a predictive payout amount, is projected for a certain timeframe. When the property values dumped in Michigan, that extended the value, the cost of, and the extension of every bond program for schools in Michigan. It is not unique to Lance Cruz. And we're fortunately, part of the problem is with, with the way our, our property values are restricted through the Headley Amendment, they can drop like a rock, but they only increase by the cost of living. So we're still on a progressive trend. And again, we're not even keeping up with the cost of living as far as the value of the property. But we are improving. So, you know, that will continue to be. So Lance Cruz is not unique in this. It's important for us to review any opportunity we can to save money for our residents. And I appreciate the work that's being done. And when you enter into agreement.
The work's not being done here, Donna.
Excuse me, I'm still not done.
There's no work being done.
Excuse me, I'm still not being done. The fact that we, that we enter into an agreement, we can't just back out of it. We have to do it as a board. We have to consider it. And we can't by choice just change an agreement that we've entered into in public. Thank you, I'm done.
Do we have any more questions in regards to the refi?
It says sales pitch.
Why wouldn't we do this?
Right.
Because there might be a better option, but how would we know?
Adam asked a question of the superintendent. Why wouldn't we do that?
Well, I mean, according to the numbers, it's, this is why I'm bringing it in front of you.
How many options have you entertained?
These three options, these.
Yeah, how many options? How many people beyond the one guy have you entertained? Is it just one guy?
The bank's rate won't change in the two years.
No, I understand that, but the choice of banks or the choice of where we go or maybe our expertise in the area would change based on who you're asking. But if we're only asking the same guy who brings you recommendations so he can make more money, and I'm not saying that all of this is bad. What I'm saying is, the fox guards the hen house here. If we're not watching it, how can we be responsible for something we know nothing about and we just wait for somebody to make a phone call? Hey, guess what? I got a deal for you.
Is that a standard practice to change financial advisors?
I don't care if it's standard practice or not, it's not good practice.
No, typically it's not, that I'm aware of.
What?
Because usually they're the ones that are familiar with your transactions along with the law firm. That's typically who you continue to know.
They're vested and that feeds into their reputation.
Zero business asking our community for money if we won't even look at it.
Nobody's saying that it's not being looked at.
It's not being looked at by anybody other than somebody who makes money off of us.
No, that's not true. She just keeps telling you.
Okay, I ask, who's reporting it? Who's watching these things? Okay, I ask, who's reporting it? Who's watching these things? There's nobody.
And, and instead of listening...
So tell me somehow the answer's changed.
Okay, but you've had answers and, but yet you...
I don't have answers.
Do we have anything more regarding the actual, what's being presented to us? Are there any more questions regarding the finance?
Eric?
Yes.
You've been cautious to say this is being presented to us without a recommendation.
Oh, well, I'm recommending because of the savings.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm saying there, there's no mandate, there's, the board has an option here. This is not, there's not a compliance piece that forces us. There's no maturity date, there's no action on the swap that forces us to make the decision right now.
All right, but, but it is administrative recommendation.
But TD Banks extend, TD Bank has extended the offer through the end of the month right now, and so that's what the situation is.
And this is a five-year...
Correct.
Does anyone have any questions that they feel they need answered in order to vote on this matter on Monday?
And if we vote on this now, Eric, then we have the potential of saving additional, uh, saving more money the more quickly we act. Is that true or not true?
That's the way this would work.
Yeah.
So what we would do is get a resolution and bring it back to the board on the day.
Can I ask why you think I should have faith in any recommendation coming from our administration when we don't watch our bonds?
We said that we don't watch our bonds.
Why do we assume they don't watch the bonds?
Because the answer was no.
That's how Mary sees it.
It's not an assumption. They, they do watch.
That's absolute.
They watch them, but they don't watch them like the bond guy watches them. They're aware of what's going on, but they're not...
No, 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 the answer was no.
Not like the bond guy does, right.
But on a month.
Because why would you?
But I, I don't see how that plays into what's being presented, but for Mary, that's important, which is fine.
How the heck can I trust somebody who doesn't do any of the work?
Yes, Amy.
Did, did they only get three banks?
Three banks responded.
Three banks responded.
They were willing to redo it, that's correct.
Of how many?
How do you do this kind of work, you mean?
No, no, three banks responded.
Right.
Banks give us, how many banks have they contacted? I guess that's the question. How many banks were con, was fifteen contacted, but only three responded?
Eric, I don't know if we know that. I thought it was five or eight in total, but we can find that out.
And not every bank would do this kind of stuff, is that correct?
No, not every bank does this.
I can't even buy a specialized banking, a part of the banking industry that does this.
Right, absolutely.
So you might have a small number of players to be with.
Right.
Yeah, national banks.
You know, because...
Is the plan to change practice and maybe watch our own bonds, maybe have an idea so that we can actually speak articulately to our community about what we're doing with their money?
I mean, we can have, I mean, certainly there's further discussion on that item. I don't know.
Further discussion is not a yes, we really need to keep track of that. It's not a position.
Communication occurs, you know, all those types of things. Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but...
What I really need is, I need a commitment to pick a side, our side. Not a, yeah, whatever, we can just go, we can talk about it.
Bonds are not like the stock market. They are a very slow-changing investment.
Yes, they are.
So, to your point, if you looked at these bonds collectively two or three times a year, that's probably way more than enough just to say.
And that's fine, but at least our district would be doing it.
I commit to that.
At least we give a crap enough to know what's going on with their bonds.
They do it in November, they do it in May.
I commit to that, and we, and I can report out.
So we already do it twice a year?
Right. When we pay the interest in November, when we pay the interest in May, we're not, we're not interested in it. We do look at them in terms of what we have to pay, what the rate is, et cetera, et cetera.
For the other two-hundred-and-seventeen-million dollars in bonds, have we looked at potentially taking this practice and lowering rates on the other bonds to save additional monies?
On this particular issue, they were not affected by the change because they were not entered into a swap agreement, but they could be looked at for other potential savings, yes.
And we've done, we haven't done swaps, but we've done some refis on some of those.
This is the only swap?
This is the only one in the swap, that's correct.
The other ones we have, like, refied before.
I think the last refi was two thousand and seventeenth, I'm not mistaken.
Fairly recent.
So, um, the swap allows us to get fixed.
Seems like a no-brainer.
Okay.
So...
So we can add to the calendar, the ticked or filed calendar, update the board in, in open meeting about this and give progress towards this.
Yep.
And then maybe they'll, they'll...
Not on a minimum of a biannual basis.
Just in case.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, do we feel comfortable moving on to superintendent's goals?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have, following our meeting on goals, which was very good, thank you, board for that. Uh, I think it was good. I, I liked the practice, the general feeling of reflection back on previous goals and then moving forward with other goals. I think those were, that's a good theme, it made sense. I think that the goals were fairly broad. Uh, you have attached, Nikki and I worked on this, you have attached some different attachments here. All of them hopefully are saying the same thing to you, and that is, one is a manual edit that Hillary made at the meeting. The other one is an interpret, interpretation of that that Nikki and I both agreed upon, and Hillary has seen this as well. And there was two pieces. One of them is on here, but I realize one of them is not. One is there was, I did, um, we met with the curriculum department and there was commitment to the Atlas Rubicon, uh, schedule for the coming year. That was asked, I asked if the, we can meet with curriculum and do that. We have done that, it's in the goals. The other piece was, you asked me about outside events, about, uh, district-wide events, and what would be an appropriate, my recommendation for the appropriate number of those to sort of, uh, put on my, um, log of other meetings that we are going to keep going.
Right.
And, uh, I heard a variety of different responses to that. I'm comfortable stating, uh, by, uh, like, an average of bi-weekly, so that would be at least two a month, so two a month would be the minimum standard on average for that. That one, I am, I apologize, it's not clearly delineated in that, but I would, I will fix that one statement for the voting next week, so you're voting in, I will say, an average of two per month or an average of at least every other week. Okay, uh, other than that, there's nothing on here that's different than what we discussed. I think those are the only two variables that came out of that meeting that I wanted to come back with you. Okay, does that, I, does that seem correct?
Does anyone have any questions in regards to the goals that are being presented?
Are you comfortable with those?
I am, yes, thank you for asking.
And you think that they're achievable?
I do. I mean, I think that they're, I, I think, I, look, I, let's just be very honest with each other. I think that they're more broad, I think they're better. I think that they're better than the last set of goals. I think I've talked about with the board and I've talked about with administrators on our team that I need to stand slightly differently on the work that's done, and some of these things put me in that direction, and I think that that's good.
Do you think they're delegatable?
Uh, many of them are, and some of them are ones that I will own myself, yes.
And fair?
Abs, yes, I do.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions that they need answered in order to be able to vote on this on Monday? Because superintendent's goals do need board approval.
I, I just have one comment. I think I really appreciated the way that meeting went, and you have mad skills on that whiteboard.
Even though it's less than cooperative.
And Nikki, of course, I'm sorry, Nikki, but that was, I really appreciate the way that went out. It was very, um, very good. You know, you're like, you saw an immediate change right there, and then you can go back and, oh, wait, don't do that. And it was, I just thought that that was good.
I think you need a Vanna dress.
All right, next year I'll wear one.
She's a what?
A Vanna dress.
Yes.
She said she would.
Okay, we're gonna hold to that, all right.
Okay, come on, move on.
And a crown.
All right, uh, next, safety, school safety liaison.
Okay, so this, in the ever-changing world of legislation that requires compliance, the, um, the school, the, um, one of the lame, I'll be very brief because I think, I'm not trying to be offensive, but that's all the attention this deserves, because I know very little about this, just that we have a date upcoming. Now I've been told that that date is not meaningful, however, might as well move forward anyway. And that is that, in part of lame duck, they created a, um, they're, to be determined panel, statewide panel of best practices for safety that has a variety of law enforcement individuals on it. Each district is required to designate a school safety liaison that will be the contact person for the work on this committee. It doesn't mean that they will be necessarily on this committee, it means that they have to be, you are now tasked with, when we tell you what's going on with this committee, you report back to your district and if it's required, act on these things, if it's not, just so you know about it.
I nominate Hillary.
No.
Now, because he walked in last, we're nominating Dr. Dixon to this role. So Greg is, Greg is nominated as our designated school safety liaison emergency contact for the purposes of this legislation. And we thought we had a deadline of the end of this month to do this. Uh, however, now we were told, although it says that, they have no plans to create this committee, so you don't have to do it, but I figured it's already on the agenda, we're ready to go.
The national office is in Puerto Rico and you have a meeting.
No, to be serious, though, if the work of this committee does provide, be fruitful, it is someone doing work on the benefit of the district, so it could be a positive thing. We don't know that yet, so we don't know what we're gonna do, but there would be a very simple resolution for Greg to be named as the designated officer, then we have, that complies with the legislation.
It amended yesterday, I think, so it's ever-changing.
It's incredible.
Is there a reason why they're sort of like, here you gotta do it, then take it back?
Because they haven't done their...
But I mean, that's the whole point. Why haven't they? It's lame duck.
Moving on.
Not anymore.
Because I think the priorities of lame duck are not the same priorities as we have now.
That's it. Okay, one, one, one more question on that. Do we need to have, um, an alternate listed?
No, no, just one person, right.
I'm sorry, a person, I didn't mean some, Greg.
Just some person.
Just some person.
So then that will be presented to us to vote in regards to adding him to the reservation.
Yes.
Yes.
On Monday. All right, wonderful.
I have just, can I just give two? I don't know if this is my spot or if it is at the end of the agenda, but, uh, just so everyone knows, we were, we're very, um, we feel fortunate. We have Congressman Mitchell coming to the district tomorrow. He has been, we asked him to do more than this, but he's been very focused on CTE because I think he has, that's where federal dollars play in, so he has some control over voting on CTE monies. He comes from business background himself. He operated a very successful business school in his prior life to politics, so he's interested in seeing those programs. So he will be in the district tomorrow afternoon, uh, and he wants to see CTE programs. So his, it is their week off, and we were given a very structured timeframe because he is, you know, gonna spend a lot of time in district this week and is interested in seeing our program. So we're happy that that's tomorrow afternoon.
Are we all supposed to be coming if we can? What is the game plan here?
Well, I mean, that wasn't, if you would like to come for the tour portion of it, it begins at about one o'clock. So it's about, actually, it's probably twelve-thirty to one-thirty would be the tour portion of it. Twelve-thirty to one-thirty tomorrow at Pankin. And we are gonna interview him at the end, like we did Brian Liston. They thought that was a good idea, so he likes the idea of a student interview of him to ask him some questions and, um, so that'll be the sort of little culmination of the tour.
You're gonna ask him what's notice?
I, I hope not, because I've tried to say that he doesn't have any control over them.
That is funny, that was good.
And then the last thing is, uh, on that, it'll be an interesting day tomorrow. We, the curriculum office and myself received invitations to testify from the House Education Committee tomorrow morning, and I think that's a great opportunity, and it's not about a specific bill, so it's not a high, it's not gonna be a sort of a yes-no thing. I think it's a great idea to have an open discussion about teacher evaluation. There's a genuine interest, I think, by the legislature to look at, to go back and look at legislation and not just keep passing legislation, moving forward to look at legislation, see if it's working. I think we'll, we'll be tactful, very honest, and, um, so we're gonna be presenting tomorrow morning, and then we will be back in the district for our Congressman Mitchell. So those are two...
Pam, have you come to that?
Uh, yes, invited by her office, that's correct. She is Chair of Education, and she invited us to, uh, testify on that. So that was, I think that's positive, and I think it's good. It, you know, it looks like, it's a relatively short list of people giving the testimony, so I think that there's, we, you know, I think that'll, that'll be a positive thing to reflect on how evaluation has been going. Obviously considerable talk on the twenty-five percent versus forty percent in student growth, and I think there's some continued interest to not have it be at forty percent by the legislature, but, okay, thank you.
Curriculum and instruction?
Oh, business is next. What in the heck? Are we, it's, it's doing it again.
It's on your paper, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I scrolled in the wrong spot.
You're on the Lansing, right?
I probably having edge portal issues again. Go ahead.
We got you, don't worry.
We have one item. We're very fortunate. There are a small team from Launcegoos High School qualified for national competition, and we have one student that qualified for international competition. So her and her coach have been invited to attend the international competition in Florida, and that is the root of the requests before you today.
Just the teacher and the student?
Correct. It's by invitation only. We'd love to send more.
We had this issue before, though, right?
Correct.
We...
And this was one where it's all like, there's always like one person, right?
That's a hornet nest.
Right, is there written consent from the parents for the child to just travel with the teacher?
It's a hornet nest.
We put that in place, though, didn't we, to make sure it wasn't that small?
Well, we addressed this before on a male-female situation, I know that.
Right, yeah.
And we said just send one other kid.
Right.
In this particular situation, the students are roomed with each other from around the world and country, and so our student will be assigned to a room with three other female students. And the chaperone will not be staying in the room, but be always are supervised like they typically are in our student cribs, where there are security personnel in the hallways during the camp after a few in the middle of the morning when they report.
So they're going to camp?
They're going to a competition, so the, she'll be...
But they run it like a camp, it sounds like, yeah?
In, in many regards, yeah. It'll be highly supervised by the, the DECA organization.
So it's not like they're going, okay.
Right, it's not like they're just checking in by their own, right, exactly, right.
They're watched, yeah.
So the, the teacher is just transporting for the most part?
That's correct. That's correct.
We still should probably have a consent from the parent?
Absolutely.
With the, something in the consent that states that they understand that the teacher is the only chaperone, blah, blah, blah. Just CYO. I don't know if you guys know, parents are crazy sometimes.
Anything else on student travel on that note? All right, business and operations office.
Yes, um, the first group of items we have are the consent and agenda items. Um, are there any questions on any of the reports listed in the consent agenda under business?
Anyone? No.
Anyone?
I have none. Custodial supplies?
Custodial supplies. Um, we currently have a contract and a bid award with, um, Nichols, I think it's still referred to, Nichols Incorporated. Um, there is, in the, uh, award, there was a one-year extension that we can, uh, they can provide us. They have provided us the number. They are, um, going to hold firm on the pricing for another year. Um, attached, and I apologize, the last page didn't have the total, but based on a calendar year usage, the contract's about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of custodial supplies. So I would like to recommend at the next week's meeting that we continue to use Nichols and, uh, take them out on the, um, price, uh, no price increase for the upcoming school year, for the nineteen-twenty year.
So how long was the original contract?
I believe it was three. Usually we try to do three, and then we try to do either one, one year or two one-year renewals.
Okay, and in this one, so we have three years with them, we're looking at the one-year extension. Then will we be looking for a new supplier?
Um, you know what? Let me just double-check and make sure there's not a second one-year renewal on that, but if, if that is true, this is the end of it, then next year we would be going out to bid for it.
Okay. Any other, and, any other board members have questions in the answer?
And then the next one is a similar situation with our electrical supplies contractor. Um, again, the attached report is the current year, I should say, uh, two, calendar year two thousand and eighteen usage report. Um, it approximates about twenty-nine thousand dollars that we do business with them. Again, this is a one-year, one-year renewal, and I will double-check to make sure there's not a second one.
And that was also a three-year initial?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was told last night.
All right, the next item on the agenda is for the resolution to approve the voting precincts. Um, typically, we've done this in the past for a two-year period, and then just we keep bringing them back. I'm recommending that we do it for a five-year period, so we don't have to keep bringing it back. Um, the only thing that's changed in here, I did put that the school district, because we are going to five years, uh, can provide a ninety days written notice if we decide that we do not want to use them as, or have them use our facilities. But of course, in no event would we terminate the agreement if we've already, um, have a rental agreement with them for a voting, um, election. So, um, I will be bringing them, I'm sorry?
I like the addition.
So...
In case we need the building.
Yeah, in case we need the building, and of course, this also, last time we did this two years ago, we included where they are responsible for, for providing security for the election day.
And it's also important with the review of school safety and access to buildings that we have that option to, as we review building access.
Have we utilized the option?
For the security, yes, we have.
Yes.
So we hired extra security to come in?
No, they provided.
Oh, they do?
They provided, or they reverse us, I can't remember which one.
We've done both.
We've done both, yeah.
It's just I haven't seen them.
Right.
So...
Thank you.
All right, that is a good...
Has somebody else seen security on election days?
I, they've done it in different ways, but sometimes it's the sheriff's office that does it, and they just agree to do it, and sometimes in some, uh, McComb, I know McComb Township prefers to hire private, so I think in McComb Township, they were private and they were stationed there, in other cases, it was, it was sheriff's office. And I, the one, I did do a little looking last time around, and I did only went to one school, but the sheriff's office car was in the parking lot, and he was currently in his car at the time. But I think there's a, there's a little bit of a voting rights issue about, about somewhat where they stand and where they stand and inability to impede, or impede voting, I think is the term, so I, I do check one, but I'm not, that's what I know.
Well, I've been at all of them for the past two elections, and I've seen most of, you're right about Atwood. Atwood did have a private person.
Right.
My mother was there all day. But like Tenniswood had the sheriff. I saw the sheriff more so than anybody else at the polling station.
Just in and out kind of thing?
No, they would pull in and kind of hang out in the parking lot for a while, see, whenever a line was generated is when I really saw the sheriff. If there was no line, they would kind of do a drive-by kind of thing.
I think we should utilize that option more, just for parents. Piece of mind, because parents are in a bit of an uproar about that. You can just put somebody outside the-
I liked the idea that if we have the option of snow days left over, being able to maybe utilize a snow day to not have school on an election day. If that's an opportunity or something that we can utilize, I would like to maybe be able to have that as a resource based upon even political climate and how things go surrounding an election.
The only thing is, is that ends up being a parent issue.
Yes.
Yep, that's a good point.
So let's just project out.
I'm all about safety first.
Let's project out on that. And obviously, November is not a significant date for elections this coming year. Who knows? And I think we just have to, let's just be open to a conversation about, I get it, there is a balance here, because surprising parents with this create some issues. Laura's looking at me right now because she feels very strongly about this. But, but there's also, you know, I think, we'll see how, let's just put it this way. We'll see on the presidential primary date what the climate and environment looks like in the line of that conversation.
Here's the thing. I'm not opposed to having it off.
Right.
But again, make a decision.
Right.
Don't do it last minute, because then you, that's when you upset people. So just make a decision. And if we go an extra day in the summer, we go an extra day in the summer. So what? But make a decision. Don't do it last minute.
Timely. Yeah, timely.
Okay, anything else?
Save your snow days for snow days. That, that's what they are supposed to be. If you want an election day off, just take it off.
Anyone else in regards to voting precincts?
Is this gonna be mucked up at all when they change the, the lines?
The boundaries or the-
Yeah, the boundaries.
Good point. It may be. I guess we'll wait and see what happens. And then we can come back and, um-
Well, do they have the option to change these, these schools is what I'm asking, because-
Not in the agreement. They'd have to renegotiate with us.
Yeah, they would. But I mean, we're pretty friendly.
I mean, but I know, but the agreement doesn't, yeah.
I mean, we-
But it would have, it would have to come back to the board for approval.
That's correct.
Yes.
So if it does change-
It's not gonna be a big deal.
Well, the thing is, is I hate to throw out the whole thing if they redraw the lines and we can just, it can be a discretionary thing.
Like maybe an amendment or a resolution or-
Can we toss something in there about a discretionary?
Oh, yes. There's a very active lawsuit about it right now.
So we know what exactly that's kind of-
Do you remember your thing?
No, no, I know what that, but like what, what would the impact, the way it's been talked about now, so we have a rough idea what the impact would be for us.
Pam and Steve would become the same district. That where Chesterfield would become part of Steve's district, basically, and Pam's current district would be, would be expressed further north.
So she'd go farther north.
This is all, th- this is either gonna resolve or it's not before. So the law passed that there's a committee, there's a committee that has not been established yet that has to make the decisions on boundaries two years from now. This is an attempt, and it, it's clearly, it's obviously a political thing.
Always is, yeah.
That to, to redrew the boundary of this, these districts before that committee would take effect. So this is, we'll know about this before the actual work of the whole redraw committee does their work. So it's separate from that, actually.
Yeah, yeah. The interesting thing about this is it doesn't matter. This, we, we go through this every few years because someone feels that they've been, you know, slighted in a particular group, and they need to adjust the boundaries to fix it for them, and it's just a stupid game.
Would anybody be opposed to adding in a small statement about buildings may change at the discretion of the administration?
Rochelle, is that something you can add?
At the, you know.
Um, we can add it, yes.
Notice or something?
Um, just because then it doesn't have to come back to us.
Right.
We're not opposed to it. We just-
I'd have to add it into each agreement, but yeah, we could do that.
I mean-
It's just a quick, simple line.
Yep.
That way we can be done with them.
Okay.
Usually there's something about a timeframe, so they're given adequate things for response and stuff, blah, 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 blah.
With, with changes of buildings discretionary to the administration. At the discretion?
That was your response?
Um, so onto human resources.
Couple of items, and I'd like to give you a couple of dates if I could afterward. On the employment rec, you can see it's that time of year where leave letters were due to either take new leaves or extend existing leaves. You'll see a lot of leaves on there. And there's quite a few resignations on there. Not a lot of hiring per se. And then I did, instead of awkwardly passing it out like I do each time of year, I just put you the little addendum sheet in front of you. And there's only two, two add-ons that will appear Monday night.
I have a question. We extend leaves three years?
You can do it up to three years.
And this, these are because they're-
What are we required to do? I'm sorry.
Are they leave of absence because they're taking time off?
Yeah, it would depend on which person we're referring to. You can see some of them are teachers that entered into administrative positions.
Here?
Some are-
Yeah.
Like, for example, Meredith Beard would be an example of that. We have some teachers on here that maybe have taken a, a leave to stay home with a child.
Or a leave to take another position?
There's, not the ones aren't taking another, that's what I'm getting at. Because I think that when they take a leave because they're taking another position in another district, they shouldn't have a job when they come back. I mean, you leave to go try a new job someplace else, you don't have a job, well, that's a kickback in, in case I didn't like it, or I don't get fired, I can go back to Lanz Cruz. I, I don't think you can do that, or should do that. I don't think you should do that. If you didn't think we were good enough to stay with us, then you're not good enough to come back.
Is that, is that a part of the contract?
Think they can re-interview.
No, the contract makes it discretionary at the approval of the Board of Education.
In the teacher contract right now, it uses the word shall. Leave shall be granted, so that would be a negotiable thing to change that word.
Because I, I just think if you think, if you dislike Lanz Cruz so much that you're leaving, you know, you leave, it must be you don't like Lanz Cruz, then we shouldn't have you on leave, and then we'll take you back. I mean, you didn't like us, you know what?
I don't, there could be a variety of reasons that causes someone-
Somebody wouldn't even come back?
Yeah. And I think we should just stay in the driver's seat in terms of art options and, and look at every one of them.
Well, if they, if they want to come back, then they go through the same process as everybody else, but
Yeah.
they're not on leave of absence and then come back. They apply for a job. If we have on leave of absence, they, they, they're kind of like have a step up as opposed to somebody just coming in the first time.
And for these, I, I don't have all of them committed to memory, but I'm not aware of any of these folks that are-
I'm sure, I'm sure not.
In one of those situations that we refer to right now on this, on the G.
As we begin negotiations with the teachers, we can definitely put that as one of our parameters. If the board chooses to do it.
Yeah.
Yes. Sharon was up first.
So teacher's contract says shall. Administrator's contract says?
You know, I'd have to look it up.
I believe it says may. I know the future one.
I think it does too, but I'm not sure.
Some say may and some say shall, and I don't want to go on record as which is which.
I'll check because it's time to move on. Leave from my, my real leave.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't know. I think it's something to consider too. I don't know. We want to put a chill on people taking other opportunities where there are advancements or other considerations. We just talked about providing information for our students for career pathways. There's another side to this too. This isn't just a, a matter of being punitive for somebody that's looking at other opportunities, I hope. We want growth. We want our employees to feel, to be provided the, the platform where they can extend their
I think, Donna, you are talking about some of these.
And I think we have a great example in the room. We had somebody that left and came back and, and is providing us great resources and, and better than themselves, or, you know, provided additional opportunity for themselves and the district. So I, I just would be concerned to saying, making it a, a a barrier that, that's not broachable. So.
Which, and I think this is a conversation for another time when we do set that, but it doesn't necessarily pertain to what we have in front of us. But if you want to- And I think we've had that conversation too, when you, when we as a district have asked a teacher to step in, up into something, that kind of changes a little bit.
That's different if it's within the district. But when they leave our district and say they go to Frazier and they're principal of the school, or an administrator, and then they don't, they don't renew that contract. Maybe they had a one-year contract with renewals. They don't renew their contract. Then they come back to us. I, I just don't feel, you know, if, if you're gonna do it within the district, you're gonna go up to fine. But not, oh.
Karen?
No, I was just gonna say, I, I think it, we should have a conversation for later. So whether or not a person takes a leave of absence to get education, whether they take a leave of absence to go, and even if they happen to go to another district, there's a lot of benefits to seeing how things are done somewhere else. And if whatever reason, now I want to come back to Lanz Cruz, and they were an excellent teacher, you know, we're in the middle of a teacher shortage situation. We would, we should always be in the driver's seat about what the circumstances are. And I agree with you, Amy. There might be times where, you know, maybe it's not in our best, best interest. But why not, instead of trying to put something in a contract that, that-
It should say may instead of shall. That's the difference.
I think we need to look at the contract before we just blank and say that definitely is what it says.
Thank you for your work.
And I think this is part before the horse.
Yeah, we're not even-
Maybe we should, before we broach this, maybe we should definitely have that verbiage specifically. Eric, do you think that's reasonable?
We can provide, so you, so per contract, the may, the, the language that allows this.
Yeah, absolutely. Just send us a page.
Sure.
I think that's reasonable.
We'll, we'll chop it out of each contract and send it to you.
I don't even think it needs to come out of every contract. Aren't we only looking at teacher contracts here?
No.
What else are we looking at?
Administ-
Well, Laura gave the example of herself when she took a leave from the Administrative Association, from the principals group.
We've got a counselor.
That's a teacher.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we've got, we've got a number of different types of-
Oh, you mean on these specifically, Mary?
Yes, specifically.
You think there's a paraprofessional on it?
Yes.
There is.
But the parapros don't have a contract with us. Parapros are through edge staff, are they not? And they have a leave of absence clause in their contract?
There's a leave provision in there, yes.
All right. So I guess we probably need that one too. What's that?
It's good. Yeah, she's saying just on the items that are for board action, so we'll assign, go to those contracts and provide that information.
It says may, right, Laura? Are you looking?
It just says leave of absence of not more than, oh, yeah.
Of not more than one year without paying may be granted. Purposes may be study trail, professional improvement, research, and personal business.
Leaves may be extended to one additional year if there are requests.
Do we have a written request for this third one, third year one?
It's three years.
Well, but that's-
That's teachers.
No, I understand, but it's probably likely the same language, because we actually did, we're specific about that, so.
Let's let Mike get us the information. We need that in order to vote on Monday, so.
It sounds like we're probably gonna need a written letter.
Uh, the severance plan.
So I know you, just to give you a little update as far as numbers. So this runs through the end of the month. As of right now, we have twenty-nine individuals have submitted paperwork. The interesting part is if you compare what people have given us and you compare what folks have turned into the company, the lists don't match. So it's actually gonna be a little bit more than twenty-nine, maybe thirty, thirty-one right now. You know, if you add all the names up together. There are more counseling sessions for folks. One is going on right now at both of the high schools. They have sessions going on in the media centers. Then they have another session planned for, it's either this Thursday or next Thursday. I forget which Thursday it is.
Any idea on the attendance of, of those counseling sessions of people that haven't signed up? So get an idea of who's thinking about it?
Yeah, I, um-
Is there a signup sheet?
Yeah, we're not really supposed to get all that, because it's supposed to be that we can't stay out of this, so there's no like perceived influence or anything going on.
What was the number we were, needed to reach in order for it to be a viable option?
We were hoping for forty.
Okay.
It's viable now, but the metrics of, that were presented come true at forty.
Okay.
For in terms of the savings?
The numbers would be what they were listed as predictions or come true at forty, but-
We're net positive now?
We're net positive, yes.
And, and some folks never attended any of the sessions and just submitted the paperwork. So it's really hard to make the predictions.
There probably is gonna be tyranny house that figures it right out.
Okay.
I would guess that. But I know the company is very, very, very confident that the list will grow above and beyond where it's at today.
How much more time do we have?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. A lot of people will go right at the end.
We, we put this in place for five years. So is it looking like some of these people might hold over for next year? Do we think that there might be a trend over the next five years?
So there's language that allows us to tell, ask them to stay another year in order to take it if they're in a high need position. The payout over five years that they received, if they elected.
They're in five years, you choose. Correct.
Good.
But we, this isn't just a one-time deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought they knew who was going next year.
Yeah.
Unless you approve, you know.
But for right now, we just said this time, but we could certainly go back and-
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So did we look at the attrition rates of new teachers? Only because Michigan State just put out a study.
The finance study or the teach, or the-
New teachers.
That, right, that they are not, many new teachers aren't in it for a full-time career.
Eighty percent attrition in three years.
I think, don't you have a goal connected to attrition rate?
I do.
Yeah. So maybe interject that as a part of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and it's new teachers that are not staying.
What are they doing at the end of three years?
Going to another profession.
Well, whatever. I mean, that's just kind of a millennial trend though, for the nation, not a specific local issue.
Right, right.
It was interesting for me at least.
I know where you're going.
I don't know if it'd be interesting for anyone else, but I met with a group of newer teachers a week ago. We're calling it our recruitment committee, so they can like, from their perspective, right, of the people in the first few years of the profession, what can we do to recruit? How can we, you know, is it a different mindset? How can we leverage social media?
You did see the study, right?
I have seen the study.
So what was the biggest reason they're leaving?
Well, we're not losing, we're not losing eighty percent.
Okay, but what was the biggest reason in the study that they're leaving?
What is the biggest reason?
It was pay and conditions.
Right.
Climate.
Right, conditions.
So-
It's climate. It's-
How supportive they feel.
I'm not valued climate. Not even so much pay, but I'm just gonna say, specifically, pay is a big issue.
Of course.
Like, seriously, these teachers that are starting this year make the exact same amount that my husband made twenty-five years ago as a starting teacher. This is crazy.
What were you gonna say, Mike?
So, but that part, we don't have a ton of control over, but the climate, we certainly do have control over, but we take no control over it.
Their number one recommendation for our school district is, how can we get out our positive climate culture that we have? That was the number one thing. So many of them said, when we were looking for jobs, Lanz Cruz was on our list. They maybe mentioned some neighboring districts, and we really wanted to get into, we were so happy we got into Lanz Cruz. And we have people that didn't that wish they had.
So tell me what we're gonna do with that information.
Well, and that's their charge. That's one of the things we're gonna work on as a committee is how can we, and we, Kelly and I actually met this morning, on how can we begin to get out the positive climate culture in our district, because-
You have to take actions. You have to start with actions.
Sorry, Mike, what were you gonna say?
And then actions have a goal.
Just to sort of do that. Can you finish?
So anyhow, we're gonna start a, a campaign. We're gonna leverage the social media. We're gonna get out the points of pride. In addition to that, we have visits planned to speak on campus at several of our local universities, Halle's Job Fair is our local, excuse me, our local job fair here.
How does that help the climate?
It's helping to share.
It's getting the word out.
He's trying to share.
Getting the word out.
But I need the word out for what?
About our positive culture.
About our, our school district and how positive it is in the-
But it doesn't change the culture. What I'm asking is, is how, what change are we affecting? What are we doing to make it a positive culture? What are we doing to keep teachers here?
I guess I'm, I'm gonna push back, and the message I received from this recruitment committee is we don't need to change it. They feel it's very positive. These were people that volunteered to be on this committee. They're not looking to leave. They're new teachers. They say we're very, very positive. They have, we have the right climate culture and to attract more people and to recruit to get the best candidates, we gotta get the word out.
So the purpose of this-
That's what the feedback I received.
The purpose of this is not to change climate. The purpose of this is to share.
Correct.
Okay. Donna, you have something?
I think that's great work you're doing. You're listening to the new instructor, and new teachers, and their perspective is the most critical in this case. And the fact that you can communicate that, that's exactly where you should be. I appreciate the work that's being done. Thank you.
So, I'm not so sure pay would be a conversation, we're number eleven in the state for highest paid school district, so only ten in front of us.
And like Mary said, the, the whole thing that came out of that study is basically, teachers statewide, feel like they go in there and they shut the door, and there's just not the support that they need, or feel they need. And so then, in short order, a lot of them will leave the profession.
Apparently, that's-
Mike, he said you have dates?
Two, two dates for you, one is, um, the flyers changed already, so don't use that, but it's only to give you the May seventh date. Uh, it is gonna be at the Concord Inn, they graciously basically donated the facility. Uh, we did go to Zucaro's and check on that, they could not match the price.
Okay.
And then the other date I wanna give you, and we'll send something to you, but April seventeenth at the intermediate school district, we have the teacher of the year banquet, and we'll be honoring three teachers from Lons Cruz.
When is that?
And they'll also be at our board meeting Monday night.
When is that?
April seventeenth is the, uh, meeting at the intermediate school district.
As the teacher of the year.
Or teacher of the year, and I don't have exact time yet, but we have it probably five thirty.
Were RSCPing that, Nikki?
And what was the other day?
May second, was it?
May seventh for the job fair.
Seventh, okay, thank you.
And that is one to six at the Concord Inn. Now, I can get y'all this in, but-
Thank you. Just as a heads up, that April seventeenth, there is a district coordinating council meeting at four thirty for those who are on that committee. We can move that, though.
No. Yeah.
We did lock in Concord Inn?
So this one is right.
Yes.
Well, everything added is correct, but we're adding new stuff to it.
Well, I mean, the date and the time, that's all I'm gonna need.
Yes.
That's one of the days.
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you. Can I, can I just clarify one more time?
Sure.
So the climate in Lons Cruz is wonderful. And that's all we're doing, is, is we're gonna promote how wonderful it is. Because teachers here are treated with respect, they're supported, they have everything they need to do their jobs. They couldn't be more successful if they're outside of this district.
I don't remember ever saying what you just repeated, but what I did repeat, but what I did repeat is what the committee stated, and that is,
I never said you said, what I said is, is let me get this straight.
What the committee said is, the best thing we can do to recruit is to get out our positive climate culture.
I'm not concerned about recruit, I'm concerned about retention.
So-
And I think that's another, uh, com, it's a different conversation.
We're gonna speak to that one clearly, or not?
Sure, 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 you want me to speak to it, yeah.
We have, and I'm not, I'm gonna externalize this, so I apologize upfront, and this is not really looking in, this is looking out, so you can be critical of that, but I'll just say, we clearly have had a funding problem for a long period of time. There's been a number of studies, I've spoken about it a lot of times, I think that there is, what has gone away in our district and every other district that has had this situation, is the support people that teachers, uh, had with them for, as, as a matter of course, for normal education, and I think those are the types of jobs that have unfortunately dwindled in our, quite frankly, our, our underfunding that's occurred over a long period of time, and, and I think that if there are perception issues, or maybe real issues of, of Nash, of what teachers are saying about the profession now versus what they used to say, you know, kids are still coming, and kids bring with them different challenges, uh, some are very, you know, need very little adult direction and operate well in a large group setting, and some don't, and for, and quite frankly, that's where the study, the main school research finance clever study shows, that that's where the level of support need to increase, and that is what I'm supportive of increasing too, and I do believe that is, uh, would be very pro-teacher and very helpful to teachers to have more adults, trained adults, working with kids, I mean, that's the bottom line, so I mean, I think that that, if, if there's some ancillary frustration about that, I don't, I don't disagree with that, and I think that there is, um, a need to look at that and address that, and again, I'm not looking in as much as people, as maybe someone, where people would want me to, but I know that that is the main finding of the study, I totally agree with that, and that's where we have had, um, loss of our district over time.
I was just gonna say, you know, Title II, which is the recruitment and retention of highly qualified staff, because we receive those funding, those funds, um, in the comprehensive school improvement plan, most buildings are required to have plans in place to, uh, to help engage and support teachers in retaining them and, and professional learning that they would have of, so, that's another thing, and I don't know, Eric, if it carries over to our district plan, but I know that that's a requirement, um, so that's probably happening as a part of the school improvement teams for each of our school buildings, and I, like I said, I just don't know if it's our district.
So then we should probably see that come our workshop based upon strategic plan.
That's what I would think, yeah.
We should be able to see information about that.
Plans are awesome.
It's results, Mary, I know, I know.
But, you know, at the end of the day, if nobody's got your back, nobody's got your back, and everybody knows it, and it is not, I don't even wanna see us trickle down, but at the end of the day, nobody's got your back.
Well-
Okay, so let's get back, we might have gotten off of our agenda, so let's get back.
Yeah, just now that we make everybody uncomfortable, okay, but at the end of the day,
Four thirty.
The whole profession.
Yes.
And our administration is, I, I'm not sure why you think that people are telling you that this administration has somebody's back, 'cause that ain't the case. I, I just-
So you're saying that people on this committee, and she can handle it.
And I heard the same thing from every single teacher, that maybe they're super open with me.
But the committee that he's talking to is, is therefore lying to what, to him, why can't we have, some people have this, this is their reality?
I never said anybody's lying, that's a horrible thing to say.
Just a minute, just a minute. Some people have this is their reality and it's real, and some have this is their reality and it's real, and none of them are wrong, it's what their reality is.
Every single teacher, parent-teacher conferences.
And I think it's very difficult in a district our size, the culture and climate that's in one building may not be the culture and climate that's in another building.
I disagree.
So that's why, I, I think it's, it's a difficult issue.
I disagree.
Let's move on to other matters, we can definitely add this to another agenda, if we choose to do so and continue the conversation, I would encourage that, um, but let's-
I'm disappointed to see that it's just poo-pooed and it's not real, so we'll just throw it out.
Under other matters, committee of a whole meeting, the ad hoc committee, were you able to meet? No, as a matter of fact, I sent out a couple of, um, emails about it, and I got nothing back from Mary, and then Terry got back to me.
I don't have any emails from you.
Terry got back to me, uh, with a date and a time, and I responded to that too, so there were a couple of, and when we got nothing back, I didn't do anything.
I, you had thrown out some dates, and I just responded, and I'm available.
But I never got anything back from any of the conversations, so we never met. Okay.
I'm sorry, Sharon, I don't have anything from you.
Okay.
Nothing at all.
So how do we feel that the structure is working? One of the things that, one of the reasons why Hillary had asked that we get together was because we've had a few conversations about how we're doing committee of the whole right now is pretty cool, however, the reason we were going to committee of the whole, this has been an issue, you know, that I've talked about for well over a year or two, we've lost part of what committee work used to be, when we went to committee of the whole, we actually, in my opinion, lost sight of why we were going to committee of the whole, so what we're doing now with these, you know, um, updates from different groups at different points of the year, I love that, but like I said to Eric a couple of times, when's the last time we had the update on grievances? Or, any of the other number things that we used to have when we were, when we had weekly committees? So we have to, the point is that, we have to get back to figuring out, how do we do something about incorporating that into this thing, and it can be as simple as, what do we call it, like a, uh, an update, the department update or whatever, so that, like, he could even say, well, we've got nothing to add at this meeting, there's nothing going on, we have no, uh- Now, was that a, a part of the original structure that came out of your committee? That's the whole point, is it never got in there, but it should have, and that's why it's been sticking in my craw for a long time. So we don't need to do, like, we don't need to have a whole regular committee meeting like we did before. You just want an update. But we've gotta have some kind of an update. Yeah.
For instance, we've built an over million dollar skilled trades, that, the construction, coal farm.
Construction, right.
We spent over a million dollars on it, does anybody have any clue where we spent our money, who did what, what we paid consult, does anybody have any clue?
We, we did have a tour, that we went over there and saw the tour, but there was no-
Tours are the same, it's different.
Right, right, and I see what you're saying.
Do we have a clue?
Right.
Do we know what's going on with our, our mechanics, do we know where we're at for mechanics?
Right.
Do we know who's, are we at par level, are we down two, are we up two?
What I might see as important might be different than what you guys see as important, so I think there needs to be a list or some kind of direction in regards to how we're gonna do that. That can be, but, but because of the committee structure that we used to have, we had regular data or information shared with us, and if that was, I have nothing new this month, that's good, you know, but we had something. Don, did you have something?
Yeah, part of the-
You can talk in a minute.
The committee structure can work if it's communicated.
Right.
We've had, okay, recently, I appreciate, we just got minutes from a committee meeting.
Yeah.
So the idea of having three members show up at a committee meeting without other members getting any information on what was conducted, or, or, or any recommendations, is basically, we're back to the same old thing, and part of the concern when we had the committee meetings is that the board, uh, this, the board we had at that time, I, I think the statements were, they didn't feel trust, they didn't feel like they were hearing or participating in that, so, the, the, the structure of a committee meeting can work, but you have to be very clear on the communication with all members of the board so that they receive that information.
Right, right.
Oftentimes, the committee meetings then would go to the full, uh, to the board agenda, so the community knows what's going on in committees, because there, there is that fine line whether a committee is authorized to act by, for, if, for the board.
Right.
And that, and that was part of the discussion that, um, there, there's very close to, if, if, it, it's perceived that the, a committee has the authority to make a recommendation, or limit the other information going to full, full board, that basically requires the Open Meetings Act would require that that information is shared, so.
So are you seeing that here?
Oh, we're getting closer.
Yes. And, and I think that's, that's what we need to do, we just need to be-
Right, so it, I don't know, that, I haven't, I still have, I, I think where we don't go in depth in some of these things, whether it's building, or, uh, curriculum, or, or technology, that, and we used to have separate committees for that, um, I'm not sure that still this board would be comfortable or has the structure to share that information openly, so-
Okay.
Um, I, um, I, I still think that would be a challenge, because we, there is that, we hear that tone sometime of mistrust,
Right.
accusation, and, and where that would compromise a committee structure.
Sharon, Terry, why don't we sit down and put together a date?
So you guys wanna do- That was the goal, we can do that, yes. Alright, so today is the conclusion of this meeting?
I'd like to hear from the board.
We have the right numbers, the right emails.
Yeah, okay, great, okay, wonderful, so you can take what you heard today to that meeting and, and come back with something for us, okay. Alright, policy committee, we did meet, we met twice, um, we went ahead and redlined the entire board operating procedures, unfortunately, one meeting we didn't have Sharon, and we did miss you at that meeting. Sorry, I did look at the stuff, though. Okay, yep, we, we were able to get a big chunk of the work done at the first one, um, so here attached the agenda, you do see, um, our redline, and then you do see it without, is how it would sit for voting. We did go ahead, you might wonder why is the whole, the entire table of content, contents crossed out? What we did is we went ahead and changed the numbering of the table of contents to align with the policies.
And that was so fun.
So if there's an article, Article II, there needs to be a board operating procedure for it, it's in Section Two of the board op. So hopefully, there, there's some consistency there, so we can find things where we need to find them, and when we need to find them.
So is this going to go to the board for consideration?
Yes, this, this, this would be voted on.
At the end of the second.
And I would still express my concern with, uh, two point nine C, um, you know, board member, uh, addressing violations of board, and I will bring that, I have a, I still challenge her.
That's the-
It's a different number now, though.
Right.
I saw it too.
I had two nine, okay.
It's the majority versus supermajority, is that what you're talking about, yes, now, um, we aligned the board operating procedure with the policies.
I understand.
Okay, but, okay, okay, alright, I hear you, okay.
It, as challenging as that was to do, it was, it was necessary, it made a whole lot of sense, 'cause over the years, like, trying to figure out where it was in this other stuff is really difficult.
Thank you for the word.
I did see it, though, I don't, I remember it, but it is.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm sorry, I'll find it again, I'll get the right one.
But we're going for the second reading, correct?
Well, there's no first reading and second reading, because these aren't policies, this is a board operating procedure.
Yeah.
This was all put into place because, um, they hate Pam and me.
Well, I see this, I, I see this as, the policies have administrative guidelines.
No, they don't.
They do know.
For them, so I think we need to have administrative guidelines also.
We can't have administrative guidelines either, because I'm not sure if you're aware, but we're all equal here.
Right, and this, this says all of that.
This is all BS, this is just because Don doesn't like Pam and Mary.
No, I understand that's your opinion, but I don't necessarily, let's try and not make it personal, let's keep it to the facts that are in front of us.
Yeah, that's the facts in front of us.
No, it's not personal. A big section that we did homework on, and what I would really like the board to take a look at, is, um, two point four under the second attachment, so we're looking at the manual, we talked about vacancies, and how we're going to fill vacancies, because it seems like we, over the past few years, we've had a lot of vacancies, and every time that process was done, it was done differently. So this administrative guideline will give us that direction to where every single time it will be done in the same.
Or are you, I don't see that with two four.
Two four vacancies.
I have board member-
The newer one?
The newer one, operating procedures manual.
Oh, I'm in the wrong thing, hold on, hold on, I'm in the wrong one here, hold on.
Not the revisions, but the-
Point four.
Two four, let me get there. I did read it, though, okay, there we go, thank you.
So, prior to the appointment process, the board operating procedure will be read, so we're gonna read this before we start the process. The board has thirty days to fill a vacancy, applications are made available at the administration offices. Uh, all board members will receive completed applications prior to the designated special meeting for review. At this special meeting, candidates will be interviewed for the vacancy, board discussion of candidates will begin at the conclusion of interviews. Every board member must vote yea or nay for each candidate, and a di, and additional round of voting will narrow the field. Final board discussion will take place, followed by final voting. If the result is a tie, there will be discussion and subsequent votes until the tie is broken. Once a candidate is selected, a final roll call vote will be taken to appoint the candidate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So one more, now I have a, a common and or a question.
Do you have, do you have comments or questions in any other section?
I've got a couple of comments, but the thing I wanna say is, like, just a general one, but I did have a couple of notes, um, back, oh shit, I gotta go back on this one, sorry, the, the page that has the listing of our meeting, our workshops and our meetings and what we do there.
The calendar?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Where is that at? Let's see, where is it? There we go.
Where you got it?
Uh, let's see, page, it's after four, four point two, point four, after that. Four two four, okay. Or page thirteen, I guess. And it might be semantics, but we mentioned, uh, in the January scheduled meeting dates and workshops, uh, summer and fall, and of course, we do other ones which are listed on other months, um, it just sort of felt, since we do put them in there, we have them in there, that, under that schedule board meeting dates and workshops under January, uh, it just felt like we should also put the spring and the winter, and what do you think about?
Or just get rid of for summer and fall.
What I also was thinking, since we sort of had it there, it feels like it's at the top of the year, here's what we're gonna do all year, put down like the month next, like you said, summer, put August, put fall, put November, even though when you go down into the month, you see it, but it just felt like it was, it was a good right at the beginning thing, does that make any sense to anybody?
Well, what I'm wondering, if those change.
They can, and that would, the same thing we've got down here, like, we've got May down for spring, and we've got August down for summer, we can change those.
Right.
They're not carved in stone.
Right.
It's just the way I think, that's all, so.
I think we need to just get rid of for summer and fall.
Okay.
Schedule board meeting dates and workshops.
Workshops, okay, I'm good with that.
Do you got that, Nikki? Yep, got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, yeah, um, and if we talked about this, forgive me, down in December, we've got school of choice approval, we did do that historically in January, and do we have a discussion about why we wanted to move it? I don't recall.
I'm sure we did.
Yeah, I don't remember.
We did, because there's a reason, hold on, Lisa, Lisa, Lisa. Kindergarten roundup?
What was it?
They were still kind.
That was it, okay, okay.
And there was something else, there was, there was another reason why, Lisa gave us two reasons why she would like to do this.
Okay, I, I knew there was something, but I couldn't remember what it was.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we were gonna talk about having it a little bit earlier, so that we had time.
Yeah, there was always-
Maybe everyone was a data piece, I think, that we wanted to get something, so.
Anything else?
Yeah, what was it, what was it, what was it? Just a verbiage thing, I noticed in some of this, we had President, and then Superintendent, and then some we had Superintendent and President in different, um, different ways, where we didn't have them consistent the way we, um, had put them in there. It's just, it's a thing I do, so if no one cares, we can leave it, but. And then back, like, on the Committee of the Whole Meeting, so one point, no, it's in the wrong one. Anyway, we've got, the Board gets the packets six days before, Committee of the Whole is two days before, Special Workshops is four days before.
Yes.
And we're cool with that?
Yes, because we didn't change anything.
I know, that's why I-
Oh, yeah, I, I think we're all, we're all good with how we're getting our packets.
I don't really like the two day.
I think the two day was, hold on, I have it right here, I think it's four point two one, Regular Board Meetings. Regular Agendas are created by Board President and con- and consultation with the Superintendent, presented to the Board no later than six days prior to the meeting.
That's a regular meeting, yep.
Yep, and posted for public four days prior to the meeting. Updates to Agenda will be posted with notification of the update to the Board via district email as soon as possible. Committee of a Whole, uh, meeting agendas are presented by the Central Office Administrators involved and provided to Committee Members two days prior to meeting dates. That's the, um, you know how, we, we asked of them, if they have an item on the agenda, they attach it? This gives, they need to attach their stuff two days prior to the meeting, so it gives them more time.
Sometimes I don't think, well, whatever, I would prefer it would be more than two days, but if everyone else is good with it, I'm okay.
Sharon, I think one of the reasons it was two days is just depending, well, I guess now it, it doesn't matter as much, but when it used to be the first and the third, because of the timing of the last reports.
Timing, yes. And, and by that, I simply mean, everything you possibly can do before two days, yes, and if there's certain things, like, they're hiccup for something else, if two's the best you got, that's fine too. And then four days for the Special Subemergency and Workshop Board Day, so. Like I said, if everyone's cool, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else, any questions in regards to the changes to the Board Operating Procedures?
Oh, okay, when we're done, then I'll make my general comment.
Okay, because we are asking for vote for approval of this on Monday's meeting, so if there is anything that you would like questions answered prior to voting?
Yep.
That would be the top.
Yep, so, I, I printed out the prior one, and my printer isn't working, so I couldn't print the, the actual manual out, so I'm in a different place. But Board District Oversight, four point one, was the old one. Board District Oversight. And if someone gets it, call it out, please.
I think, is that the one, we changed the title of one section.
Actually, that's, that's now, I think it's zero point zero, whatever. Under B-
Where are you, I'm sorry.
Zero point zero Board District Oversight, District Vision and Mission.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, so we've got A and B, so under B, District Vision and Mission Statement shall be presented to the Board by the Superintendent. Do we have a timeframe that we want on that, or a quarterly, semi-annually, yearly? It just feels very, too open and vague. And it could just be on a as needed basis, but it feels like we need to put something in there.
We didn't change this.
Right, but that doesn't mean I saw something I didn't see before.
I, I think the fact that we've had it where, uh, because of our circumstances, we were able to change and modify, I think was almost a benefit. So I, I, I understand that it's not specified, but, um, it still would be at the prerogative of the Board and the Superintendent to do that. What do you think, Eric?
Well, I think we just did that when we reaffirmed the keeping of the existing plan.
Right.
I mean, it wasn't that recently, but we agreed to keep the existing strategic plan updated. I mean, maybe that's done through the, through the analysis every August.
And maybe we say that as per strategic plan, which is, you know, once a year deal. Anybody?
I mean, I'm okay with how it is. I think if it's something that falls to the wayside and we don't keep up with it, then we can add verbiage to hold us to.
And I think that's my concern, because if we don't have any kind of placeholder, even if it's as vague as, you know, semi-annually, it does tend to kind of fall by the wayside, and then you sort of forget about it, so, that's-
So, I'm sure it'll get, if there's issues that fall under the guise of strategic plan and whatnot, it'll be discussed in District Improvement. And then it will, I mean, it's-
So leave it like that.
It's not like one of those things that goes away, it bubbles up like-
I agree.
Okay.
Like a bad drain.
Right, yeah.
Anything else?
Does anyone feel under one point oh policy and procedure? We have Review of Board Policy. All Lancashire's Public Schools Policies slash Administrative Guidelines will be adhered to by all District Employees and Board Members alike. It always felt like we should have the word students in there too, and we don't. I realize that's a very broad statement, but if we're talking about all policies-
Well, but this is pertaining to us.
I know.
This doesn't pertain to students, so the Administrative Guidelines-
Right.
Should say students, not our Board Operating Procedures. I don't think students should be represented in our Board Operating Procedures at all.
But I was focusing on the word policies.
Yeah.
And it felt like it was missing, okay.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I wanted to say was, um, and this, when you're saying, this is not a policy, so we don't have a, have to have a first reading on it.
Correct.
This is sort of a first reading, if you're going over it and deciding whenever.
Correct.
But I remember on one of them, we had gone to second reading, and there were some comments and requests for, for clarification and changes under first reading. It did not happen, when we got to second reading, when that was brought up, um, comment was, this is second reading, this is what we approved, and that's what we're gonna do. Roll call was called, and then the whole thing just got passed like that. We have historically, if we're at second reading and there hasn't been, there's an issue, such is that, like, something to get put in, should have? Or, you know, as is the case sometimes, you've reviewed it, but you get to it, and you look at it, and you say, hey, I didn't see this before, and I would like to have a discussion about this, and then maybe consider a change. I don't like just saying, second reading is final reading, that's all there is to it, because, shoot, then why bother, you know?
Well, and I think that the big thing is-
It is the purpose of second reading, I understand it, but I don't want to get shut down if someone has comments, questions, concerns that things weren't, weren't fixed.
Right, and I agree with that, my thing is, is that I, that you need to be able to do business on the Board. So if you know, like, if, if you have questions and you see something, you need to find that information ahead of time.
Yes, but we have had, yes.
No gotchas at the table, no last minute.
That's not what this is about, that's not what this is about.
But, okay, but that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, in terms of policy and all those things that we're talking about here, policy and bylaws, the second reading is supposed to be, we've discussed it, we've made the corrections, we're all good, is that right? Okay, let's vote.
Yes.
But we have had occasion where they were not gotchas, they were things that were supposed to have been changed, and had not been changed.
Then maybe, um, practice or courtesy could be, hey, I know we're supposed to vote on this today, I still didn't get my information, I don't feel comfortable to vote. Any emails to somebody or to anybody, or- It very well could have been an email that somebody didn't receive. Like, Mike and Lisa, and I sent Mike an email, and he just never, he never got it because of the email situation going.
And that's fine, and that's fine, or in this case-
Let's be proactive of it.
Yes.
And say, I'm not ready to vote.
Right, but when we tried, when, when we tried to do that one time, because something that was supposed to be corrected wasn't, there was a roll call called for, and the vote call happened, and the vote passed in spite of everyone having discussed before, something that needed to be changed. So all I'm saying is, I'm fine, this is supposed to be second reading. I don't want anyone who's supposed to be, um, voting on this coming up with a legitimate, hey, we messed up here, we didn't fix this. I don't want it to, no, not done yet. I don't want it to be too bad, so sad, roll call, here it goes. We have had occasion where we screwed up, and we need to acknowledge it.
You, you feel, that's how you feel, and that's absolutely great, and I, I respect that, and we will definitely look at that in regard-
It's not gonna happen often.
Right, right.
I have a quick question. It used to be in our policy that, and I, I'll be completely honest, I didn't read for this, so obviously, it's not something I've looked for. It used to be in our policy that if one Board Member wanted something tabled, that-
Yep.
Policy was, it, it only takes one Board Member to table something, and we table it. Is that still in our policy?
I think you need a second.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yes.
I don't think anybody will say no.
A Board Member can ask for something to be tabled, they need a second.
And as long as there's a second, then we'll table it, so I think that Sharon-
Correct.
I'll tell you what, you say, hey, I'm not comfortable with this, we didn't get the information, I'll second it every time, okay?
And like I said, I believe in-
These are not, these are not gotcha things, since we've already discussed or looked at, they're just like, I found out we messed up and didn't do this right, we can't pass this shit, so, that's all. Okay, so we have any other questions about Board Operating Procedures?
Can we be done?
Yes.
So the next thing on the agenda is Board Goals Discussion. It kind of came up in regards to the Superintendency Evaluation, at that meeting, we started discussing whether or not the Board should have goals. It came up in the Board, in the, uh, Policy Committee, we talked about, should the Board have goals? If you look in our operating procedures that, uh, we went through, it does state that the Board will have goals. So, what, what do we think about the Board having goals?
I think the Board needs goals.
As long as they're aligned with the districts, I, I don't think it makes any sense to have goals that even indirectly don't relate to the-
Right.
To the districts, because we're all supposed to be.
I don't think this is a discussion for a Committee of the Whole, I think this is a discussion for only the Board.
Yeah, but the question is just, do we all believe that we should be doing this? We're not gonna have a discussion right now.
But I just don't, when, where and when do we want to have that?
We can let Administration go.
Yeah, Administration can go, I mean, for everything that we have learned on the agenda, the Administration can go.
Anybody want to run away?
If you want, what you, you are free to do as you choose.
No, I'm not.
That's it.
Why was I the first one that stood up?
You don't know about the GPS we have on you yet, do you?
Let's take a quick five minute break, and we'll come back and finish a few things up.
How you doing?
Yeah, I, I-
I'm asked.
Okay, that's fine.
Alright, just go.
We do have to.
Just go, I'll go myself.
Timely though, because I have-
I know.
Not my own driver.
But that's my input. We're seeing an open session, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. Terry, really quickly though, if you're gonna go, the last thing we were gonna talk about is what, um, what we're gonna wear at graduation ceremonies.
Okay.
Oh, here we go.
What we're gonna wear, oh, you mean gowns versus no gowns?
Yeah, so I don't know if you want to stay, or if you don't want to stay, it should be.
We can do that one.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, but we're gonna come back and do this five minutes.
No, no, I'm fine, if we want to stay, we can just stay, I'm glad, I'll just-
Can we just put a Board Goals Discussion in a workshop?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Let's decide which one, move on.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Let's just go to the ceremony.
Yeah.
So which workshop is appropriate?
Is it the summer one, packed?
Yeah, it kind of is, but-
Can't we just have a goal to like, do?
Or maybe it can, maybe a subcommittee could, maybe a subcommittee could talk about it or look at it, bring something to the Board.
It feels like the summer is really already filled.
Yeah, the summer is filled.
Our goal is gonna be, don't do drugs and nobody's smoking.
Wait a minute, if we have a break, I'm going, if we're not having a break.
No, we're not having a break, we're all sitting here, so let's just keep going.
Make up my mind here.
Let's, let's snag this out.
So Hillary, is summer workshop, summer Board is pretty full with agenda items, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we want to just do-
So we want to add the Board Goals Discussion to a workshop? If, if-
Why not?
And we can figure out which workshop-
You're still running, right?
It's still running, Eric.
Yeah.
He just wants to know if it turned off. Why? Very far left button at the very end.
His last time, I remember, he forgot to turn it off.
Far left, not right, far left, yep, right there.
One, two, solo?
Nope.
Home?
Hit that one and hold it down, and that will turn off, don't do it yet, great. So if we want to move the Board Goals, uh, to a workshop, what we can do is, we can look at the agenda items on the workshop, find the most appropriate one, and talk to the chairperson of that workshop.
Okay.
How about we do that?
Okay.
Okay, so, last is Graduation Ceremony Discussion. So this is a discussion in regards to Sharon jumping out of her seat.
I mean that we wear clothes to the graduation.
What the Board wears to graduation. So in the past few years, we've worn-
That's a joke.
Yeah.
We've worn leggings.
Welcome to the Board.
We've worn lays, just leg clothes, and the thing that really kind of struck me-
I thought she was gonna say leggings.
No, just leg clothes.
Oh, Lord.
We're not having that conversation right now, keep going.
No, 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 yeah.
What happened, what, the thing that struck me the most was last year, when we were standing at the doors, I believe it was at my school north's graduation, the people who were working the door kept asking us to take our seats.
Yes, they didn't know.
They did not know that we were the School Board.
Right.
You need to take your seats, because the graduates are coming in. And it's like, duh, we're leading them, but they didn't know who we were, and we weren't distinguishable enough, and that to me really kind of fit home. So I know that there's been contention, or just differences of opinions in regards to wearing gowns or not wearing gowns. I have a button, I don't have a button, I have a cord, I don't have a cord, the whole thing. I think that it's very important that we are one of seven. We are a unified front, we are a unified Board, so we wear the same across the Board. We all wear unified together. So Nikki did some work for me, and did a little bit of a mockup.
Togas.
Togas. But these are, are these the same, Nikki?
They have different parts, that's the only difference.
Okay.
Stop, timeout, like, I can't wear my own?
So-
You're gonna wear-
No, you can, if you want to, right, no.
You can wear gown.
You can wear your black gown, if you want to wear your black gown, but we would all wear-
You want me to wear these god awful, effing ugly colors?
Can I model it? You're gonna look better on me.
You wanna model it?
Hold up, hold up, we'll get one, so we all wear a gown.
I, I still, I think there's more discussion.
If you're not cool like me, I get it, but come on.
I think we are unified, I think we all, right.
I, I would want to ask, I have discussion, I think we are citizens. I think to be mistaken for our community members is exactly what we, we are. We are, uh, we are representatives of the community, to go in and to me, as, represent ourselves as educators, I think is a misnomer. I, I, to me, it, I think that wearing clothes that reflect my role as a community member, as a parent, is who, who I am. And to try to separate ourselves from that is to put ourselves in a, in a different perspective, so I, I am-
But it says Board of Education right on it.
But you're wearing, okay, is this with my, my suit on?
Underneath your robe.
Oh, that's, that's where I'm going at. I don't believe in wearing the robe.
Yeah, so is it robes or no robes?
I, I think we're isolating ourselves from the community. But that's my opinion.
I, it, we, we are the only people on this stage not in robes.
Which is fine, I'm not, they, they, um, these people on, um, there are educators on the, on there that, that are. You're right, we're elected from the community as community representatives.
And there are other graduation ceremonies that we participate in that require us to wear robes.
So the robe is not-
So if you don't want to wear a robe, you can't participate.
The robe is not a representation of an educator, the role is in a representation of a dignitary or an administrator, which we are.
Right, we are.
So, to, to single it out and say it's only an educator, only educators wear robes, that's not, that's not the case.
Well, I, I, again, I, I think it's important, I reflect as a community member, not as a-
But if I'm standing on the stage, if I, if, if I was looking at that stage-
Yes.
And I saw people in robes with, with different colors or something like that, I would see them as, those are important people making important decisions for our school district. Not-
I want to be a donor, I just can't afford that.
Are they a doctorate? No, I'd say, I, I wouldn't say like that.
No, and the thing is, I think-
But I also see Don's point, but-
His point is good, but I think-
That's why it's gotta be different than everybody else's.
If we look at, we're required to do the IEM, everyone is required to wear a robe.
Yeah.
I think it's a place we can take a little, um, direction from also.
Yeah.
I personally, you know me, I hate those robes 'cause they're so stiff and hard up on that stage. However, I think, and, and your point is well taken also.
Right.
Mary's point is well taken. You have no idea, sweetie. But, but the point is still that if, if the ISD requires all of us board members that sit up on that stage at IEM graduation, I think that's a good place to look at for direction.
And what's, what do they, what do you do on that stage?
What is it?
They wear robes?
Oh, yes.
Everyone has to wear robes.
If you don't have a robe, they actually have robes back there if you don't have one.
So they're actually very strict about it.
Well, we thought about that too.
We thought about that too, but what if you forget one, or you have the wrong one, or you miss one? So this is just, you have one.
I think that's a good representation of the district.
Oh, you know what we can do?
Eric is insured.
We can make them two sided.
That, that's another thing.
Can you make gold on one side and blue on the other side?
I thought of that.
Sure, why not? Yeah.
I think they can.
She, you're just, she just would, she just doesn't like these-
Anything for price, right, Nikki?
These two colors together.
Listen.
That's all.
Actually, I'm not opposed to the two colors.
I think it looks-
As ugly as they are, really not opposed to the two colors, but-
That is dead Michigan.
Terry, Terry, you've been kinda quiet, what do you think?
No, I just, I, I, I voiced my opinion in the past and I still feel the same, which is, uh, I just feel like it's a ceremony, I think that we should and ha- should have been wearing a robe. Um, uh, it's the first time ever that I've not ever worn a robe. And it was very uncomfortable. I, I just think it takes away from the ceremony.
Plus, you don't have to figure out what to wear.
Huh?
You don't have to figure out what to wear.
Right, and I just-
It's about whether or not it fits today.
What, Terry, yeah.
I just feel like, uh, and, and I respect your opinion too, but I am an educator.
Yes, you are.
I did get multiple degrees. I would like to wear my robe and, but this does not preclude this. I could still wear my robe, and frankly, I could still wear my, my sash, this would not prevent this at all.
Well, no, we would want everyone, we would want everyone to be the same, is what we would want. We would want everyone to be the same, because we are one of seven, we are all the same. We're, we're sitting up there not as educators, we're sitting up there not as, I have this degree, that degree, or the other degree, we're sitting up there as a unified board of seven who make important decisions, who do things for our community, but this is the school board. You look and you go, wow, there's the board.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think that, if you look at the structure of this, I don't think that wearing my, because I am an educator, I don't think my, wearing my color is-
Not then, there or that time.
Huh?
That's not the purpose you would be serving, sitting on the stage. You're not sitting up there as one of these kids' teachers, you're sitting up there as a board member.
No, I understand, but the people that elected me, most of them elected me because I was an educator. So what about that?
Right, but that you're not these kids' educators, do you know what I mean?
Eric, weigh in.
Oh, boy.
He's making faces over there, I think he needs to say something.
I, I, I just like these.
Just on Don's-
I'm starting, I do.
But I do like that.
Gotta hold it in.
This is nice, I like that.
Hit that thing and just knock it over. That's what I wanted to do.
I forget. Sorry, I'm somewhat inappropriate.
I, I, I think, I understand, um, the problem is there's a nuanced point. There's a, there's a general idea and then there's nuances on the general idea, so that's where we're at.
Yeah.
I think it looks nice, I think it, Don, I don't, I understand what you're saying, that you're not, that it's not, that you're not an employee or someone that's on the stage. However, I think it looks nice that if everyone has a robe on, I like the way it just looks like we're all on the same team or something like, it looks like, it looks unified of some sort, you know what I mean? It looks like, and, and not to say wearing dress clothes doesn't look unified, and I have no idea how the tradition started for all of this to begin with, I'll be honest with you. But I just think it looks, I would feel like if you had a robe on, and I'm wearing a robe, that it looks, I think it sends a, there's a, some sort of a psychological message that's positive that it sends, is what I'm trying to say.
I understand the point.
I mean, I, that's all I'm trying to say.
I do like this, though.
Do we get this later on?
But I'm not wearing one of those. Just kidding.
What?
No, you wouldn't, 'cause you're not part of it.
You got your, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, that was the little-
You don't, you don't get to. We should make a bush one for Eric.
No, no, no.
With the hat, with the hat?
No, I vote no for that.
We get to design the hat, fool.
I vote no.
You're a non-voting member.
Superintendent.
So-
No, 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 no. No, I mean, I, look, look, I, I think there's a balance between understated and standing out, I think, but I don't think either wa- either way too far is the right idea. That's what I think, you know what I mean?
Here's my quick question, though, on the, um, the north side, why do we not have the emblem for the north side? Because they have an emblem just the same as-
Oh, maybe we do, I'm sorry, maybe you have the wrong one.
Yeah.
No, 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 I'm looking at that, and that's not their emblem, their round emblem that's on the front doors of the school either.
Okay, well, I can switch it out, I was just trying to give a visual.
No, that's awesome, but if it's the same-
I also wouldn't be opposed if you can do a double side and you can have blue on-
Just make sure they're up high enough.
Do the double side, blue on one side, yellow on the other? That's just a bad idea. I just like the idea of one sash instead of two.
Yes.
'Cause it, oh, I brought the wrong sasher, oh, I have the wrong sasher.
No, no, you could have the one sash, but I also like the fact that this really shows that we have two high schools.
Make sure those emblems are up higher, right, and down lower.
But we have actually three high schools.
Just because it'd be bad if we have had-
We have three high schools, we have Pellerin.
Good point.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask about that, what do you guys think?
We talked a little bit about doing a purple tassel on the back.
That's a different issue, yes.
Doing a purple tassel just on the back.
But that puts it in the back.
Or white on the side, right.
That's an extremely valid point, because they are our graduates.
They are.
And to not represent them in an equal way-
Yes.
Would be a, would be a slam.
Could we, could we line the inside with their color, like the, the inside of the edge here?
No, because they're still, we don't sh- we, we don't have their emblem of the school, you know?
We could put it on there, no?
What, you could actually put it on the point on the back.
On the, that would be a very different representation than what we're talking about.
You can't put it on the back, because then they're bringing up the body, and that's not okay.
I don't think the back is a good idea.
Well, but I don't know exactly what Jostens can do and can't do in regards to the sash, you know?
I think you can do, I pitched the thought of having blue and then flip it over and it being gold. So I know that they can do that.
Okay.
My biggest thing is we need to have this decision done by the end of this month, or it won't be ready for this year.
Right, right. So wha- what I think we'll do is we'll continue, well, we'll discuss and vote on Monday.
You want other purple ideas?
Well, yeah.
You can just put them at the bottom.
I'd like to hear it.
What's it on, Adam?
Little, you know me, tips.
If it's on, if it's-
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Terry, on the tips, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say either there, or even if it's on, on the triangle on the back.
You want it on the back, you don't want it on the top.